Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. It's my pleasure to call to order this city council meeting for the afternoon of February 13th. Welcome, once again. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
President.
Torres. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
President.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan. Kandelis.
President.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today's invocation will be provided by the El Grito de la Cultura Academy dancers, and Councilmember Jimenez will tell us more.
Good afternoon, and I'm excited to welcome a few members of El Grito de la Cultura, Academy of Mexican Folkloric Dance, which includes over eighty families when they are all present. Our dancers today are from ages seven to sixteen years old, and we thank them so much for being here. I told them that we're going to be on television, and this is their moment to shine. Very excited about that. Yeah. The director, Ms. Elena Robles, is a photojournalist and community activist who has been teaching about our Mexican-American culture in the community and college, in community colleges for fifty-three years. She was a founding member of the Ballet Folklorico de Stanford, and continued to teach them for nearly thirty years. She was a founding instructor of the San Jose State's First Ballet Folklorico, Director of Los Lupeños de San José for twelve years in its growth years, and a founding board
(music)
member of the California statewide Danzantes Unidos Festival. All these organizations still exist, and her proteges are instructors and directors of their own companies throughout the Southwest. Thirty-five years ago, Ms. Elena was the first to bring course studies of Danza Azteca to California's ethnic classes and dance companies, and hosted Capitanes Aztecas from Mexico to teach those who wish to learn. Over the decades, her generosity and contributions to the cultural vibrancy of our city have been fundamental to our diversity today and can be witnessed year-round in festivals, schools, events, classes, parades, civic and family events, as well as events in District Two. Today, we are proud to witness the post-pandemic generation of El Grito de la Cultura, Ms. Elena, and the kids. Please, the floor is yours. Thank you.
(applause)
(music)
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 Move approval.
Great, thank you. Tony, do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
I have no cards.
Okay, we are ready to vote then.
Can you vote orally? I can't pull up the vote screen.
Fine by me. Call the roll?
You don't need to call roll, you can just all eyes.
As a group, alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 6.1, long-term power purchase agreement with Zeta Solar. I believe there's a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Lori Mitchell, Director of the Energy Department, and really pleased today to be joined by Paul Emerato. He's our Deputy Director of Power Supply. So this contract is a solar and storage contract that's named Zeta Solar. This is a power purchase agreement to purchase renewable energy, resource adequacy, and energy from this contract. It will be located in Merced County, and it will be constructed by the end of 2027. So this power purchase agreement will be for a term of 20 years, with a total cost of just over $225 million. So just a little bit about Long Road. They are a developer that primarily focuses on wind and solar and battery storage projects throughout the United States. They've been operating since 2016, and they have over 1.9 gigawatts of projects under operation. They're not a publicly traded company, and they are a developer that we have another executed power purchase agreement with that council approved last year called Sun Pond. So a couple of the key terms of this agreement are, one, deliverability, which means it's able to be connected to the transmission system, and then the labor components of this agreement. So importantly, this project needs to be connected to the transmission system in order to be delivered to us here in San Jose, and it has received a full allocation from the California ISO, who operates the transmission system. But they need to show additional projects on the development of this project. So in order to keep that allocation, they need to have an executed power purchase agreement by February 14th, which is tomorrow. So we are recommending approving it today so that we can sign this agreement tomorrow, and they can keep that allocation. Another key aspect of this agreement are the labor provisions, so we understand there's some current concerns from IBW. In response to that, Zeta has offered to include language in the power purchase agreement that requires them no later than six months prior to construction, which will likely be in late 2025 or 2026, that they or their construction contractor will enter into a project labor agreement, or they'll award the contract to a union signatory entity, which will employ a union workforce governed by the existing labor agreements. So in summary, deferring this item would likely result in Zeta losing its deliverability allocation and require the parties to renegotiate key aspects of this agreement, including the price, which may mean that the project does not get into construction. And then importantly, it would also not meet our regulatory requirements that are mandated by the Public Utilities Commission. And so with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you for the presentation. Let's go to public comment first.
Will Smith.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity today. My name is Will Smith. I'm with IBW Local 332. We represent electricians here in Santa Clara County. We are prepared to support this project moving forward, and we're appreciative of the staff bringing forward the memo that they submitted today. However, in order for us to be on board and support this, we are looking for an amendment. We want to see strong labor language, and we would like to work with the staff to develop strong labor language for this project as well as future projects. We have a few copies of just the basic language that we would like to see implemented, and it touches on things such as prevailing wage, apprenticeship hires. Talks about the construction that falls in the apprenticeable occupations of the building trades, and it talks about multi-craft project labor agreements that shall be deemed to meet the requirements of payment of prevailing wage. For projects that do not implement a multi-craft project labor agreement, developers shall submit monthly reports to the agency showing compliance with payment of prevailing wage, compliance with skilled and trained workforce requirements, and to document employment of apprentices. So we urge the council to move forward with this project, but to move forward with solid labor standards. That's going to promote a high-quality project that's built with local hire as well as apprentices. Thank you very much. I could submit copies of this.
Sure, I'll take it. Back to council.
Okay, thank you. Back to council. Councilor Batra?
Thank you very much for bringing this contract forward. I need a couple of clarification. You say about $11 million, up to $11 million a year. Does that mean that we are obligated to buy $11 million, or we have the option to buy up to $11 million?
So we are obligated to buy the energy that the project generates. If it doesn't generate energy, then we're not obligated to purchase it for $11 million. But every megawatt hour that it generates, we're obligated to buy it up to that $11 million.
So what's the minimum obligation, you say?
There's no minimum, so if it never generates any energy, we're not obligated to pay anything.
Okay, so if it works best for us, we get it. If not, we don't need to. Okay, so that's a pretty decent contract, I can see. I have a totally unrelated question to the generation of power. I'm going to ask it. We may not be able to discuss that over here. During this last week of storms, when 800,000 people lost the power, thing which occurred to me is, is there any project that related with this one, connected with this one, which is working on improving the distribution of power as part of this one, or any affiliated project? Because we're going to be dependent on our power distribution for a long time with the vendors we are connected with, despite of whatever the power, clean energy, whatever power we buy, from wherever we buy. But our distribution is still going to be dependent on the people. We still are getting it from them for the next many, many years. And I just want to know if there is a project associated anywhere which is working on improving the reliability of the distribution.
I can take that one if you'd like. Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. As a reminder to everybody, we're talking here, as you know, about power generation, and then that power generation will be connected into the grid through, and the transmission system on the grid. So in terms of this particular project, the key thing is getting the power generation and then connection into the transmission system, which is governed in California by CAISO, the California Independent System Operator. In the city of San Jose, the distribution infrastructure for essentially all of the electricity is owned, operated, and maintained by Pacific Gas and Electric, PG&E. So we have an ongoing series of meetings where we are working with PG&E to try to understand how we can support each other. But the primary responsibility for the operations, maintenance, and re-establishment of the distribution system in case of storm events is with PG&E, a private entity. So our role is primarily supporting in that regard, that we all are, have agreed that we have a mutual interest in increasing the resilience and reliability of that.
Thank you, Kip. Since PG&E operates under permit from us, is it possible for you to have a long-term joint project, single project, whatever, where you periodically report how they're trying to improve this distribution over the future?
Probably the appropriate place to report back on that would be through the TNE Committee, Transportation and Environment Committee, where we report out on our city infrastructure work, including our work around electrical reliability. So we can include that. Those kinds of conversations and updates on those in the TNE report would be the appropriate place, I would think.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I knew that this wasn't the right place, but I just wanted to get this out so that some right place, we get that discussion going, because that's equally important, if not more important, than pure, the clean energy purchases. Okay? So if you will help me include that in that other place, I would really appreciate, because there's a definite public interest in that area. So thank you very much for the power thing, and I'd like to work with you and keep on getting the other thing highlighted. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor Mahan. I want to thank our ESD staff for putting forth this potential contract. Wanted to hear some thoughts. I believe Stephen May have just shared with you guys the potential language to ensure labor standards. I believe it's four points. One is making sure that the project will comply with prevailing wage provisions that are applicable to Public Works projects. The other one, the second is the construction will fall within an apprenticeable occupation in the building and construction trade, shall be performed by skilled and trade, skilled and trained workforce. The third would be, work under a multi-craft project PLA shall be deemed to meet requirements of paying of prevailing wage, use of apprenticeships, which is really important to me, to make sure we're building that pipeline of workforce, as well as using skilled and trained workforce. And then the fourth, the fourth one, is for those that do not have a PLA to ensure workforce standards by requiring a report to make sure they're meeting these standards. You have the language in front of you. I just wanted to get staff's, any feedback from you reading this language? Any initial thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. Fortunately, we received this language late this morning, and so what we worked on in the supplemental memo yesterday, you know, has already been approved by Long Road, the developer, so we would recommend proceeding with that. Aspects of this language are included in the PPA, certainly complying with prevailing wage. But unfortunately, we don't have time to go back to Long Road right now and see if this would be acceptable to them in order to sign the power purchase agreement. So that's the unfortunate situation we are in this morning.
So just, I just want to make sure I understand. So this language, would we, in order to implement it, we would have to come to an agreement with the other party, essentially?
Yes, and if I could, again, Kip Harkness, we, in IBW's initial letter, our understanding was that the priority issues were a PLA and the prevailing wage, and we've incorporated both of those into the modifications in the power purchase agreement, and the developer has agreed. Some of the other issues that you've raised, we would be happy to explore and come back in terms of any future PPAs that we have, and see, explore the feasibility of including those and bring that to council for a conversation and a direction from council. But at this point, given the need to hit the deadline so that we meet the CPC, CPUC requirements, and are not in a deficit on our regulatory requirements, we don't have the time to check that in real time and do that change. So our recommendation or our request from the staff side would be to move forward with the modified PPA language, and if there's any modification to that that you direct to clarify it, we're fine with that. But that the other ones require a little more research and time for us, but could potentially be incorporated into future PPAs.
Okay, I appreciate that, and thank you for, you know, providing me your expertise and opinion. I'm going to move forward with accepting the report, but also including the suggested four points that have been provided by our labor partners.
Great, thank you. And just to clarify the motion, it is to approve the power purchase agreement. Is that right?
Yes.
Move the staff rec.
Correct, and the four points provided to us.
Okay. And move them forward for future consideration?
Move them forward, well, future consideration, but also this, the consideration of this project.
Okay, I think I just heard that didn't work. Is that, did I miss something?
Well, the existing power purchase agreement does not have those points in it, and we would have to negotiate that with the developer before we could guarantee that we could do that. So unless we had a delegated authority or something like that, we don't, we, it's a two-parties piece, and we don't know whether they would sign.
Can we direct them to at least approach with these suggestions? And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work?
Does that work for staff? Okay.
Yes, that works for us.
Okay, so we would make an attempt. Okay, great. We have the, I just wanted to clarify the motion, that's helpful. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
No, you're not on.
There you go.
Thank you for that. You know, I understand the predicament that staff is in, and thank you for the supplemental memo. But I will say that unless it's in writing, it may, may not happen, whatever. I mean, I totally understand the situation that we are in. I also understand that they're in a situation where they need to have this by tomorrow. So the agreement, however you have to do it, add an addendum, add whatever language it is, but I think that this is the moment at which it would be important for them to also sign on to some of these provisions. So I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit sort of reluctant to just say, oh, well, you know, it doesn't fit in, maybe next time, or whatever. I think that they are also motivated by having this done by today, and if they're not able to do it, then they should just say, no, we can't do it. But if you don't have it in writing, then, you know, I just see it as a floating thing out there for future, whenever it comes around again. This is a 20-year agreement. It is worth a lot of money, and I think that we should have high labor standards.
Thank you, councilmember. Just to clarify, I think the developer is very willing to work with labor. You know, we worked with them late yesterday on the language.
Great, then they should sign an addendum saying, we agree to this.
Yeah, I can speak for them.
I mean, it's up to them. They need it. They want it by February 14th. And, you know, it just happens that, yes, in fact, we want to be able to work with them. We want to be able to do things with them. They're able to be in a good position. So, you know, you have the agreement, you add an addendum. If they agree to it, and they have told you, yes, in fact, they agree to it, then they should just sign it.
So just to clarify, we received this language at about 11:30 this morning, so they haven't had a chance to review this language. And so that's the, that's the challenge that we have, is just the timing of this request, and getting it agreed to before the item is heard here today.
I see.
Okay, so I think the motion on the floor is to go to them and ask them to agree to this in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Torres?
Thank you, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to be supporting the motion. However, I do have a question. I know that I had just left the, you know, the council office that I used to work for, right before the 2021 PLA agreement happened in our city. Does, does solar projects like this, are those covered under those PLA agreements? Or is it, or what did it, I was, some of us weren't here, so that's why I'm asking that question, so.
Yeah, let me turn to staff.
Yeah, my understanding, and I'm happy to be corrected if somebody from Public Works is here to correct me, is that that PLA requirement is applicable to city constructions and public works. This is not considered a public work. This is a power purchase agreement. And while they are constructing this facility, and we are getting the sole benefit of it, it does not qualify as our public work, and we are not constructing it, and therefore it is not within the realm of the existing policy. Not to say it couldn't be added to future policy, but in, within the existing policy, it does not qualify.
Okay, no, thank you so much on that, Kip, and I'm not sure if Matt, is Matt here? Was that, was that correct? Okay, great. And I'm glad, and I know we're all getting this right before the meeting, but, you know, if, if we are serious about moving to clean energy or solar energy, I think we need to revisit this, the policy, because I know that Councilmember Ortiz has been saying, we don't want to rob Peter to give it to...
Paul.
Paul, thank you. I was going to say Mary, but okay. But vice versa, right? So I think we definitely need to revisit this, because, like I said, everybody has to be at the table, and if we are serious about, about cutting our emissions and creating new technology and having new technology, then, then we need to definitely revisit the policy. If we're going to have big projects like this coming down the pipeline. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. I don't see any other hands. Let's vote. Oh, Councilor Foley, were you, I didn't see your hand on my request list.
You know, how many, how many weeks have we had this kind of technology? And I'm still not doing it right. I have a couple of questions about the item that was handed us today during the present, in public comment. Specifically, the way I read this is that it's, it doesn't, I'm not interpreting it, but maybe you are, Lori, or Kip, or Nora, that this, the items one through four, apply to this project only. Item number four specifically says, for projects that do not implement a multi-craft project labor agreement. So that, I'm wondering if that affects other projects and has the unintended consequence of affecting other projects that we're not discussing right now. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm reading it the way you are. I think that's the challenge with this language, is we just, you know, we just received it, so it obviously needs a review by the city attorney's office and the counterpart's legal counsel as well.
And our interpretation in regards to the scope for this particular project and memo is we would have direction as it relates to this project. I don't think we would view ourselves as having the authority to take direction on all other projects, because it hasn't been agendized. Would be my, my understanding as Deputy City Manager, to be confirmed by the attorney.
Thank you then. Councilmember Ortiz, will you accept a friendly amendment modifying these four items specific to this project only? Because we're not here discussing other items, and there's a lot of unintended consequences by saying this affects all projects, that all projects will require PLAs. While that may be a future intent, to have this language so late for us as council, we haven't had an opportunity to have briefing on this memo to understand the implications of it. So I would hope we could limit it to that, and then if you want to come to rules with something else, that's your option, of course, but I'm really concerned about it being included here and having an unintended consequences affect, affecting all projects going forward without having the opportunity to actually think about it, investigate it, do research, and understand what the implications are all of this, from a council member's point of view.
No, thank you so much, Councilmember Foley. I think we did get staff's opinion that we don't essentially have the authority to do a blanket item for all projects, right? So that being said, it sounds like we don't have a choice but to only have it for this item. So I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, great. We go to Councilor Davis.
Thank you. While we don't have the ability to do it carte blanche right now, would it be possible to add a friendly amendment to direct staff to come back with an assessment of adding this to clean energy projects? So that we can, they can come back to us with all of the information that you were talking about, Councilmember Foley? Could we add that amendment?
That is a wonderful suggestion, Councilmember Davis. Let's do that. Let's add that. Thank you.
Yes.
Great. And would that come back to council or to a committee at this point?
Well, since we're already having this discussion at council, we might as well just have it come straight to council unless Councilmember Cohen, who chairs TNE, wants it to have a first pass there.
Do you want to go to the committee first?
No, I mean, I think we keep hearing this conversation each time we have one of these, and so I think it's time for council to just address the issue.
Okay, so come back to full council.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. We are on to item 8.1, approval of an exemption to the city multifamily housing revenue bond policy. And this opens a public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority to finance the construction of a 300-unit multifamily rental housing development to be located at 950 to 970 West Julian Street in San Jose for the View at Julian by Gem Core Development Partners LLC. The public hearing regarding the financing is required by federal tax law. The public hearing is now open. We will now hear from any person who wishes to speak about the proposed financing. Does anyone wish to speak about the financing?
I have no speaker cards and no hands.
Okay, and I was going to ask if you had any written comments on the proposed tax-exempt bonds or the project.
I have no written comments posted since the agenda was posted.
Okay. I'm not seeing anyone rush forward to comment. The public hearing is now closed. Great. Do we have any other comments, or, and that constitutes our public comment on the item. I assume, Tony, we did not have any hands on Zoom either?
Yes, I said no hands.
Oh, we don't, we're not using Zoom. Never mind, sorry.
This item was actually, we should announce it, this one was noticed to use Zoom, and that language is on the agenda. I have no hands.
Okay, great. Okay. So then, coming back to council, do we have any comments or a motion? Second. Okay, motion by Foley, second by Jimenez. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay. We are on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Okay, thank you. Item 3.3, Approval of the 2023-2024 Midyear Budget Review Report. And Jim's coming down to give the staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Jim Shannon, your Budget Director, here to talk about the midyear budget review. The annual adopted budget is a financial plan predicated on the best information available at the time it is prepared. As with any budget, however, changing conditions create the need to modify the original plan. Through its budget policies, the City Council has designated midyear as the appropriate time to perform a comprehensive assessment of the current year's budget and the midyear budget review report as a vehicle for consideration of any necessary budget revisions. To prepare the report, the City Manager's Budget Office, working with all the city departments, analyzed the status of the city's operating capital budgets contained in over 140 funds. Based on that analysis and the recent receipt of several new grants or reimbursements, we have budget adjustments recommended in the report for your consideration today. So I would say this is a good news report. It's relatively boring, which is really good news for us as part of midyear budget process. Operating capital funds are generally performing as expected, with a few exceptions here and there. While the economy has cooled, that was generally anticipated. Most indicators are still, though, relatively positive through the first half of the fiscal year, and very modest growth anticipated in the future. Budget adjustments are recommended in various operating capital funds that we will talk, talk through here. And as we kind of get into this, as my staff settles around me, we are relatively well-positioned as we enter into the upcoming budget process, so that is all. So that is also good news there. Just a quick couple of economic conditions. The unemployment, the employment is modestly higher. So employment is up by about 11,000 jobs year over year at the end of December. That's 0.9%. So that's good news, again, reflective of, of the slowness. The unemployment rate is up the, however, though. So it was 2.1% last year. It's about 4%, 4% this year. Real estate activity is continued to be a weak spot for us, so the, maybe it's getting a little bit less, less weak, I would say. Our single-family home prices are up year over year, which is good because they were trending downward earlier in the, the fiscal year, but they are up as of the end of December. The rate of property transferred sales had plummeted in, in recent, and I would say over the past year. So you can tell from that, from that graph, looking at December of 2021, they've really sort of trended, trended down. But that downward trend has lessened, and so it looks like maybe we're seeing some bottoming out in terms of real estate transactions, which would be good news for us. Looking specifically at the general fund, our revenue growth is, is modestly higher. We're anticipated to exceed budget levels by about $30 million. Expenditure savings tracking to see around $15 million. As part of the actions here, we are gonna establish, recommending it to establish a 23-24 ending fund balance reserve of 13 and a half million. That reserve needs to get to $35 million by the end of the fiscal year to be able to make our budgetary projection. So we, we project as part of our forecast that we have $35 million available on an ongoing basis in fund balance at the end of the year that then continues forward into the beginning of the year. So by sending aside this money now, we're part of the wave where we want to be by the end of the, the year. That'll be used, as I said, as a funding source in the five-year forecast and then in the proposed budget. We have a few adjustments here. Now, the mid-year budget process is really not a venue to do new things. There'll be, a few new things here and there, some special in capital funds, but we really try to limit it in the general fund because we want to save that for the proposed budget process. We do have the one action, as we call it urgent fiscal or programmatic need, that we want to bring forward in advance of the proposed process, and that is $100,000 to replenish funds originally intended to support the rapid response network. At the council's meeting back on January 23rd, we approved an allocation of $150,000, matching an equal amount of the funding provided by the county of Santa Clara to Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment for temporary emergency sheltering and support of new arrival migrant families seeking asylum that entered the U.S. after the end of Title 42. Of that 150, $100,000 consisted of funds previously set aside to support the rapid response network that is overseen by Amigos to protect, is, is a network of nonprofits led by Amigos de Guadalupe to protect immigrant families from deportation threats and to provide accompaniment, support during and after arrest or detention. But because the contract was not executed, those funds were available for immediate redeployment. So we're recommending now to restore that, that funding, and the administration looks forward to working with Amigos in partnership with the county to develop a contract that aligns with the intent of the rapid response network while responding to urgent and emerging needs for best support of our vulnerable immigrants. So that is the one item we have for $100,000 in the emergent fiscal category. The bulk of the other adjustments are in the required technical rebalancing actions category in general fund. These are adjustments to align with new budgetary in, in information, to correct errors or to adjust council direction that was previously given. We have a number of grants and reimbursements of $3.3 million that we're recommending, the new grants coming in and their associated expenditures, and then a number of net zero cleanup actions that really just move money from one appropriation to the other to accomplish the same objective. And I want to talk through now a few of the items on the required technical. So we have on the revenue side, property tax is a little bit better. And so about 13 and a half million dollars of additional property tax is expected to be received this year based on the most recent information from the county. About $3.5 million of interest earnings in the general fund, based on the cash that we have in our general fund bank account, plus the higher interest rates, we have a little bit more money coming in on the interest side for, for revenue that we want to recognize. The fee activity in the PRNS program is doing a little bit better also, so we want to recognize some of the, the funding there. And then we have several transfers in, in and out for a net increase of $280,000. For the expenditure side of the house, a few of the ones I wanted to highlight here. So the largest one is the janitorial contract services of $2.7 million. About $1.4 million of that was related to a, to work that was conducted in '22, '23, but because of invoicing issues and working with the contractor, they weren't paid until this fiscal year, so we need to make sure we have enough money to pay that. It was already paid this fiscal year, so we need the budgetary room to, to, to make those payments. And then another $1.3 million or so for the new contract that was amended and updated at, in October to pay for labor primarily as well as some supplies. It is a pretty big adjustment, so we are working with Public Works to look and see if there's ways we can do some cost controls through the end of the, of the fiscal year without impacting services. Then we have some electricity, so $900,000 for streetlights and traffic signals. Electricity is certainly costing more and we're seeing that on the city side as well. Animal care and services, about $600,000 related to some veterinarian, some contracted veterinarian, veterinarian services, animal food, food supplies based on the population of the occupancy there at the animal care center, as well as some temporary veterinary position staffing work to allow for some additional in-house medical services for the trap, neuter and release program and to make a few more spay and neuter surgeries available to, to the public. And then the last expenditure item there is the recommended continuation of the MED-30 program, those three, three captains recommend to extend those to the end of, of June. As we had looked at the continued sort of high volume of fire medical transports that we had written about and discussed in the information memorandum released in December, that work hasn't substantially changed here, and so we're recommending to continue these through the end of June. And then as you see, the balance of all the, there's a lot of our stuff that I'm not talking about here, that's, that's in my lovely mid-year budget review report. But the balance of those general fund transactions leaves $13.5 million that we're putting in the ending fund balance reserve. A quick hit on a few special funds. Airport is, is kind of similar to the rest of the economy there, so a little bit down from where we were the last fiscal year. And takeoffs and landings are about five, 5% down from where we were. So definitely higher than where we were during the, the pandemic, but has certainly leveled off and declined a little bit. We are recommending the establishment of the San Jose Opioid Response Fund. We are expected to receive seven, at least $7 million over an 18-year period. That number will probably go up as more companies sort of sign on to the settlement. We need to spend those monies on opioid prevention and intervention, harm reduction and related services. They'll be in its own separate fund. We've got some funding recommended in 23-24. We'll do a larger, more substantial analysis and a set of recommendations as part of our budget process. We have an opioid prevention grant program, some community awareness and edu, education, and some oversight funding for this fiscal year. I might have gone a little heavy on the arrows here, but this is a couple of capital funds we wanted to highlight. So the CNC, our construction and conveyance tax, which is related to real estate property transfers, is, is downward, so we do want to take some budget adjustments there from 40 to 35 million. We have been planning for this, but we wanted to take those budget actions as part of the mid-year budget re-review. Building and structure and construction excise tax funds, those are based on commercial valuation of building, building permits when new buildings are being built or they're being modified. Commercial and industrial are down, but residential is up. And so overall, we're net downward a little bit, and those do have an influence on our different taxes there that support the traffic capital program. And so building structure is trending downward, not making a budget reduction yet, but it is trending downward, and construction excise looks like it's about even with where we thought it would be in the budget process. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the animal care and services dog and cat license fee. It's a little bit unusual, but as, when council approved the proposed budget for 23-24 back in June, there was some direction to look at the dog and cat license fee to see if we could apply an, an, an income waiver to that fee program and to look and to be guided as how that might look by doing a survey of some other fee programs that the city already administers that has an income waiver for. We had a more extensive presentation on this topic as part of our January 23rd study session, but that ended up getting deferred. Since the fees and charges portion is not, didn't get sort of rescheduled, we wanted to just take the mid-year report, touch a little bit on those, on those dog and cat license, license fee for future consideration. So there's approximately 60,000 valid licenses for a, a cat license fee for one year, it's 25 to 35, depending on if they are spayed or neutered. Dog license ranges from 25 to 65 per year. Overall, cost recovery of that fee is not 100% cost recovery, it's about a 79% cost recovery. Traditionally, that has been one of our lower cost recovery fee, fee programs. When we tried to figure out who might be qualified for an income waiver and what impact that might have, we did some analysis and I, I mean, we, I mean, the Public Works Department and the IT Department. Looks like potentially roughly 10,000 applicants may be eligible for an income waiver. It's a very rough estimate, the actual figure might, might be lower. But given that potential volume of applicants and the relatively modest fee of sort of 25 to 65, we were looking for a methodology that would be easy to administer for both, you know, the customers and for the city, and sort of settled on an approach if council wanted to move forward of using something like what they do for the scholarship program in PRNS, where essentially if you're already enrolled in a, in a federal state program related to in, in income, such as those that are listed here, you would be qualified for this waiver, provided that you are an actual resident of the city of San Jose. So providing this documentation along with the RABE certificate, you would be eligible for that waiver of, of the fee. And so then we got to figure out, well, what does that really mean for us on a budgetary basis? Again, these are sort of rough without a lot of great data, it's gonna be a little bit rough, but potential annual revenue loss, something like $150,000. We probably need some level of temporary staffing to help with the additional processing, especially while we're assessing what the actual workload might, might, might be and look for some potential automation improvements to make the collection easier in the future. We know it will take some ramp-up time to adjust our systems and processes to appropriately communicate the change to the residents. And so if council wants to consider this, we recommend that to be part of the discussion for the March budget message approval, so we can really think about how we would resolve this as part of the proposed budget process, and it would allow some ramp-up times to, for us to be implemented by the beginning of the fiscal year. And so with that, I am wrapping up, just kind of putting here the next steps in the budget process, and so we're just kicking into high gear now, so we'll be releasing our five-year forecast in just a couple of weeks. And then we, we get on to the March budget message conversation, the production, release of our proposed budgets, our study session, and then final approval in June. So with that, here's the folks who mostly joined me after mid-weekly presentation, and the rest of the staff from the departments are available for questions after public comment.
Great, thanks, Jim. Appreciate the mid-year budget review. Thank you to you and the team for all the good work you do. We're gonna go over to public comment first.
Matt Tuttle and Tamara Chavez, please come on down.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Tuttle, president of San Jose Firefighters Local 230. Today, we ask for your continued support of funding our paramedic supervisor position, also known as MED-30. Your support keeps a position staff that is an invaluable resource for our citizens, but also is direct support to our already overworked paramedics who have endured years of being overworked and being understaffed. We are still the lowest-staffed big city department in the nation and are still operating at similar levels from decades ago. We urge you to vote you for continued support staffing MED-30 and appreciate your support and fight for helping San Jose firefighters and the San Jose Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Tamara Chavez, Regional Director for PATH. As you know, PATH has a significant footprint in San Jose. We offer permanent supportive housing, interim housing, and an array of supportive services, including outreach throughout downtown. As the new fiscal year approaches, we appreciate the opportunity to publicly share our priorities. We understand that the economic picture for the city is not quite as rosy as it had been since the pandemic. Despite the median narrative, we are making progress on homelessness. The challenge remains that we see more people entering than exiting the system. We need to remain focused on what we know that works. First and foremost, we ask that the city remain committed to the development of much-needed affordable housing in every neighborhood. The cost of inaction far outweighs the cost per unit, especially if the city continues to consider innovative housing options. Secondly, the city is in dire need of additional interim housing options. On average, only 10% of the people we serve can access shelter on any given day. If we truly want to clear our walkways and rivers, actual solutions must be offered rather than just a threat of enforcement. The city has already been a leader in this area, opening successful sites such as Evans Lane, but more is needed. Additionally, prevention is key to stemming the steady flow of people entering into the system. Recent studies show progress being made by programs that provide a one-time cash benefit to individuals. This could be especially effective in at-risk populations such as older adults 55 and older. All that being said, we greatly appreciate your partnership on these matters. Now is not the time to take our foot off the gas. PATH stands ready to continue our good work together and make further progress throughout, through humane and life-saving interventions to end homelessness. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Duane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jim and your staff for putting together this mid-year budget. I just got a few question for you. First of all, I, I believe that we, we strive to uphold the staffing level for the fire department just as much as a police department, and I appreciate that projection of the $600,000 for the three captains to continue the MED-30 program. This is essential, we, we, as we move forward in the future, we, we make sure that program, especially MED-30, to continue because MED-30 do a whole lot more than what we see, right? They, they respond to first on scene, they, they call out for resources, they take care of our firefighter who have needle sticks, they coordinate with the counties, the, the list go on and on and on. And I just want to make sure that we continue as a city to make sure that the fire department staffing, it's been, we are what you call the, the biggest little city in the nation. In a metropolitan city, the size of San Jose should have anywhere between 60 to 70 stations, but we are, we only have 33 stations. And our staffing is still the same since 1980. And somewhere, the, the amount of, volume of calls have gone all the way up to 110,000. And 11,000 of those are from our unhoused residents. And the amount of calls that we have is almost at a breaking point for our firefighters, not only mentally, physically, and emotionally going through that many amount of calls without having, looking at the future to, to build more stations, having more firefighters and put in station that was browned out or not in service, back in service. And I just want to make sure that we continue to support that. I have a question for you regarding the San Jose Opiate Response Fund. I understand that part of it go to the prevention grant program, some awareness and settlement. Now, does that go to nonprofit organization or who does it go to? Does part of that funding go to the fire department to buy Narcan? Can you give me a little more detail on that, please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So of that amount that we, that we have there, we do have for $350,000 that will be administered by PRNS as part of their best, best program for an opioid prevention grant program. That will, so that's the amount for the grant. We have $75,000 to help with that grant oversight of, of that amount, $50,000 for capacity building, for community learning about how that would work with the best, to do some evaluation as part of the, the best, the best program. So we have about $475,000 sort of related to the opioid prevention grant, grant program itself. Then we do have about $120,000 for the purchase of Narcan and training for city staff and community members for, for some of that use. $60,000 for a similar program within the police department specifically, and then $29,000 for the fire department for public education and our reach materials related to the mitigation of opioid misuse, drug disposal, and Good Samaritan laws and treatment. So a little bit of more detail than was provided on that slide, but certainly the focus now, I think, is on some community and edu, education pieces, some harm prevention with the Narcan and a grant program, and I think we'll be rolling out as part of the proposed budget process some more substantial work.
Thank you. And then regarding the animal care services, you said there's approximately 60,000 valid licenses. licenses in the city of San Jose. Now, the fees that you put out here, is that a reduced discount fees for our citizen, or is it only a regular fees that I'm looking at?
Those are the regular fees. So those 25 to 65 range, those are the existing fees for animal license for cat or dog.
And then the 10,000 applicants that possibly could be eligible for the income waivers, then is there a particular guidelines? I believe that ISCE is right here, it's on page 13. So these are the documentation, or at least some of the documentation that they need to prove prior to get the fee waived?
Correct, yes. So I think that the intent in talking with staff was not making it, you know, more difficult for the person to apply, make it easy for staff to administer, so they wouldn't have to verify the income of the individual because that's already been verified by the program that they belong to. And so that was the intent, to provide proof of documentation, be enrolled in those programs, and then you would be eligible for the waiver.
Well, thank you for the report, and I move for approval of the mid-year budget report.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Second by Batra. Let's go over to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to extend my gratitude to, of course, Jim Shannon and the dedicated team at the Budget Office for the comprehensive report that's been presented. I understand that due to the postponement of the fees and charges study session, you did incorporate some of the information that was going to be presented into this memo, so I appreciate that. I would also like to express my appreciation to the Public Works and housing staff for further reviewing our community development block grant request for the African-American Community Center. Really excited about the dollars secured for that. And in June, our budget BA consisting of myself, colleagues, Councilmember Davis, Torres, Batra, and Duane presented a memorandum in June funding for the repairs of the crucial community center in our city. I'm excited and grateful that the CDBG funding will allow for the completion of the full scope of repairs to the roof and the replacement of the windows. In June, I also brought forward a separate memo alongside Councilmember Torres, Duane, and Batra to bring forward an ordinance exemption for license fees to waive the animal care services dog and cat license fee for those meeting certain income eligibility criteria. We have received numerous inquiries from families who are worried about being unable to afford the licensing fees for their pets. Only multiple pets can be quite expensive, as they require several vaccines to be up to date, which can cost up to $100 each. The most vital vaccine, rabies, is required to licensed pets and can last from one to three years. As noted in the report, renewing a three-year license fee can cost families between $55 to $65, depending on whether their pet is spayed or neutered. And if you add the costs of the multiple vaccines that pets need and the licensing fees required by the city, times the number of pets the family actually has, this bill can, of course, add up. The need for help with pet care is definitely there. In the last year alone, my office in collaboration with the Humane Society provided free vaccination and spay-neuter services to 458 pets in District 5 for families unable to afford this essential care. Many of those who contact my office share their concerns about not being able to afford a license. To help alleviate financial pressure for families considering pet adoption or to continue to provide care for their pets, a potential waiver of licensing fees for future vaccination can serve as both a benefit and a incentive, especially since the animal shelter is already struggling to find permanent homes for the 900-plus animals currently in their care. With that being said, I do have some questions to put this decision into perspective. Jim, I understand that you have an estimated impact this may have on revenue, but you expect it to be much lower than the number projected in the presentation. To provide more context to this conversation, can staff return during the budget process with more information on the number of owners who have paid for licensing versus those who have not paid for their licensing?
Thank you for the question. I think, just to clarify, it could be lower. I don't know for sure that it would be lower, but it was a really, I just want to emphasize the ifiness of that revenue projection. But, you know, I think, yeah, I think those additional elements, we could probably come back with some. I'm looking to Matt Lesh, I think some of those extra questions we can likely try to get better at in this part of a MBA or something, probably. But I'd like Matt to comment on that.
Good afternoon, Matt Lesh, Director of Public Works. One of the challenges is it's not known exactly how many pets there are in San Jose to know which ones are the gap. There's going to be a real challenge there for the accuracy of what you're asking for. We can certainly make estimates, and we'll come back with estimates.
Okay. Would it be possible to, you know, as this moves forward, for there to be ongoing reports to the council, just for us to get updates?
Reports on which kinds of reports, so I can make sure?
In regards to the progress on, you know, the number of individuals or families who have paid for licensing versus those who have not paid for the licensing?
We could certainly report which ones haven't renewed, but we won't know necessarily exactly how many don't have their licenses. It's kind of an unknowable.
Well, those who didn't pay, like if they waived it, or something like that, essentially?
If we waived it, if this went through, if we waived it?
Yeah.
We could list how many were waived, yes.
Okay. And you just answered my other question, which is, there's really no way to determine how many unlicensed pets are in San Jose.
Right.
Okay. I believe that these numbers of pets who aren't licensed are much higher than the pets who are licensed, and this information, I think, would be pertinent for my colleagues to consider moving forward to provide an exemption to families who are unable to afford this fee. It's also noted in the presentation that the purpose of pet licensing is to ensure all dogs and cats have proof of rabies vaccinations, which complies with the state rabies mandate. Would it be fair to say that individuals who are unable to afford this fee could inadvertently contribute to residents ultimately not licensing their pet, thus preventing the city from ensuring that all pets are vaccinated?
Yeah, I think at risk of answering for Matt, I think there's probably a risk there. I know that, my understanding is that the cost of the rabies vaccination itself is probably more substantial than the permit, so that's probably the biggest factor. But I'm sure that the permit fee weighs into that to some extent.
Do we think that by providing this exemption, we can expect an increase in folks who license their pets and comply with the state rabies requirement?
I think that's a fair statement to make. I don't know the number, I don't know how much, but you'd probably get some, but what is significant, I doubt, we don't know.
Is there a current enforcement mechanism that ensures residents pay their late licensing fees?
You went all the way back up there, Matt.
Sorry. Matt Lesh, Director of Public Works again, sorry. There's not an active program to seek enforcement, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, exactly.
There's not an active, we don't send officers out to go and verify if they still have the animals or not and so forth.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
But I think we send letters, all right?
Yeah, we send letters, we send outreach and so forth, but so just in forms of renewal notices and send reminders and those kind of things.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for that update. Well, thank you for answering my questions and providing us with this information, and I'm really interested in rolling out this exemption as a pilot program, whether it's done by offering it to residents meeting certain income eligibility criteria, or through targeted ZIP codes, similar to what is used to offer low-cost spay and neuter for a targeted ZIP code. So I appreciate your time and the answering of my questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate that. And I should say welcome to our San Jose State Journalism students. Great to have you all here. Let's go over to Councilmember Torres.
Great. Let's go Spartans. Awesome. So, thank you so much, Jim and the Budget Office for this wonderful, huge memo booklet that we got. Some really important stuff. And I do like that our budget is pretty even, but we're definitely not out of the woods. And of course, with that, there are areas of concern, like, you know, we're underperforming in the building and structure, construction tax, the construction and conveyance tax, our sales tax. But I'm going to pinpoint some very, very important stuff in this presentation. Just like Councilmember Ortiz, I am super excited that we have found funds to help OCSA with their community center. The African-American Community Service Agency is a wonderful organization and a wonderful building where our community comes and feels safe and gets the resources they need to succeed, right, especially our small but mighty black community. So I'm so glad that we were able to find some funding. And darn it, Matt, you went all the way up there, and I have a question on, I'm going to pick, so I'll keep going with my talking points until you get down here, because it's always the awkward walk down. I'm glad to see that we continue to support MED 30. Our firefighters need all the support that they can get, especially since they are responding to medical calls more than anything else now. So my question, because I have it, I have it right here in my brain, Matt, is the Councilmember Ortiz, I think, just mentioned that going to the fee waiver based on ZIP code, is that something that is going to help us in the long run? Is that something we should be moving forward with?
Matt Lesh, Director of Public Works, what is the objective, is what I would ask? And so if the objective, so to say whether I'm meeting the objective, I'd have to ask that question based on?
Yeah, so I think, for example, I don't know if we do it, we do it, we still do it, but I know that in years past, we've had, we've had spay and neutering programs, right, just for targeted ZIP codes. And I think it was for one breed, I think it was Chihuahuas, because we all know that Chihuahuas, you know, were popular in 95127, 95116, and 95, I forgot the other ZIP code. But, and I say this because, I say this because it's when, when, you know, multi-generational families living in a house, in an apartment, in one of our most affected ZIP codes, right, they have to either, they have to either decide whether to spend, you know, money on rent, or money on food, or feed their kids. But we all know that, you know, furry friends should be for everyone, right? We shouldn't just, bridge people shouldn't just have furry friends, right? But our most underserved community should be able to have our furry friends. So I know that Councilmember Ortiz brought it up, but is that something maybe that we can hone in, is making it just based on ZIP code?
So if directed by council, sure, we could, as opposed to do an income base, we can focus on ZIP code. If it's the entire ZIP code, if it's a portion of the ZIP code, we just would need what kind of guidance, and then through the Budget Office, through the budget process, we could identify what the impacts would be of those choices.
Okay, great. And then the other, that's it for me. Sorry. I don't know if anybody has any questions with, for Matt, so just stay down here at this point. The other one is, I'm glad that we're starting to tackle the opioid crisis as a city. It's very, very important. Very unfortunate that I've had family members pass away because of overdose on opiates. And so I'm so glad that we are doing that. And I know that Councilmember Duane brought it up. My question, my question is, where are we getting this money from? And it's going to go to, I think I heard in your answer to Councilmember Duane, it's going to go to our best providers?
So to the answer to your question, so it is a settlement, a national settlement for opioid, I think, I'm looking to our city attorney, manufacturers and distributors of opioid-related products that have entered into a national sort of settlement. And so there is an allocation to the states and then to the municipalities. And so that's where that funding comes from. So the amount of that $7 million over, I forget what the time period, an 18-year period, is based on sort of those companies that are participating now, but we expect the number of companies that will participate in that settlement to grow, so that dollar amount's probably going to grow. So that's the first part of the question. And so to get us started, we do have, the funding is allocated into a couple of different buckets. So one of them would be an opioid prevention grant program of about, a total amount of about $475,000, $350 for direct distribution to nonprofits, and then we've got some for $75,000 for the program oversight of that and get it sort of stood up, as well as some capacity building and community learning within the best provider network for about $50,000. So that whole program is about $475. Then we've got the other portion, about $120,000 for Narcan and outreach and training for both city staff and community members. We have some, about $6,000 for police department training, and about $30,000 for the fire department to disseminate some public education material. So we have it sort of spread out a little bit throughout different departments, but we expect sort of a more holistic approach as we get into the proposed budget process.
Okay, great. No, thank you for that, by the way. And also, I know that, I saw that our utility tax, such as our cable tax, right, is really dipping really, 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 really low. And so my question is, as more people are cutting the cord with cable, just like me, I confess, I have YouTube TV, you know, it's, our cable tax is declining in revenue, obviously, right? And so do we, are we thinking about taxing Netflix, Hulu to make up for our losses?
Gotcha. So the, so yeah, so the, we have a cable franchise fee. It's slightly different than a utility tax. I know you and I were speaking earlier. So the franchise fee is sort of based on several different providers of cable services. So if you're not one of those cable services, you're not paying a franchise fee. So if you are just, if you are as an individual, a customer of, say, Netflix or Hulu, you're not paying, they aren't paying that cable franchise fee. That service, video streaming service, is also not a part of our utility tax program. So if a user is just getting video streaming services, there's no city revenue associated with that product. So to be able to, if we wanted to sort of bring that into the revenue fold, that would be actual, a new tax measure that would have to go to the vote of the people. So you need a 50% plus one vote for a general fund tax to be able to tax those streaming services.
Okay, so to tax Netflix and Hulu and Prime, et cetera?
Yeah, yeah.
We'd have to do a, okay. Same thing with, same thing with the landlines. I know that we would get money from taxing landlines and phones, so that's, so what can we do to make up that loss via, I think everybody has cellphones now, right?
Right. So yeah, so we do, yes, we also have a utility tax related to telephone use. That does extend to cellphones, but what it doesn't extend to is the data package for a cellphone. So if you're using data, you're cruising the web, or you're streaming or something on your phone, that's not part of the telephone utility tax. And so, and the reason why is that is, we're not allowed to tax data per federal law. It's the Internet Freedom Act doesn't allow jurisdictions to be a place to tax on sort of cellphone data. And so that would require a change in federal law.
Okay. Okay. So my request, and I don't know if I have to make a motion to it or add it in the motion, Mr. Mayor, but I would love to request an MBA on poll on taxing streaming services. So I don't know if that has to, or if that could just, you know, be on the work plan. I'll leave it up to you.
Might need to go to rules for an assessment of staff capacity and the lighting system that we use, but Lee, do you have thoughts on that?
I was going to say, I think if we were coming forward with a poll, we would probably share that in a different format rather than a manager's budget addendum for you guys to make a decision. That's certainly something as we go explore possible revenue streams for stormwater and a variety of other things, we could add a question to, to see the political feasibility of our residents to do that tax. I would say that the cities that have chosen to do that over the last five years have been tied up in federal litigation. So I think that effort, you know, the risk reward, might not technically be there moving forward, but we can certainly analyze that and have that conversation with you. But I think it would probably come back to rules or directly to council on something like that when we do future polling around other measures.
Okay, yeah, no, that'd be great. And I'm not, you know, this is just, I'm just thinking. And I'm not, you know, this is just, I'm just thinking out loud. I'm not, you know, I know that SGA SU Media is here and other folks will hear this. I'm, I'm not saying that we need to tax them now. I think that we need to study the, the issue because it is important. I mean, these, these are, these are taxes that we've taxed, taxes that we've taxed already. And so it's just important that, that, that we continue to, to make up for that, for that loss because it is in the millions of dollars. If, for the folks who didn't see this memo, it is in the millions of dollars and, and our city relies on, on, on these taxes, so. And then with that, it says that I'm running out of time and that's about it. Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you. I want to thank you, Jim, and, and your whole team for this report. I know it's a ton of work and really appreciate it. And thank you specifically for recognizing the grants for the Blue Zone project. So for my colleagues who may not have seen, um, if you, if you remember from the budget process, I had requested $150,000 from the city for, from our budget, and the mayor made it contingent on me receiving the rest of the, the funds through, through grants, which I have done. We got a grant from Adobe for $100,000. We got a grant from the Health Trust for $50,000, another $50,000 from the Santa Clara Family Health Plan. And then just last week, the Board of Supervisors with the county matched our 150 with another 150. So we're recognizing the 350 from the external, the external grants. And together, the $500,000 will be used for the assessment, which is the first phase of the Blue Zones project. And that will determine our needs and resources to improve the health and well-being of our city and whether we want to go forward with a full Blue Zones project to seek certification. For anyone listening who doesn't know, I know I'll make colleagues know because I've been bending their ear about this for over a year, Blue Zones are places across the globe that naturally have people who live, more people than the average, live to 100, age 100, very healthy, and even beyond age 100. If you want to learn more, you can watch the Netflix documentary called Live to 100. And we will be hosting a number of community events in June. We don't have exact dates yet, but we will, for this community, will have a community-based assessment. So what we look at and which neighborhoods we focus on will come from the community. I do want to thank Deputy City Manager Angel Rios and Assistant to the City Manager Laura Buzo for helping us go through the, the last year and figure out how we can incorporate the Blue Zones work into work we're already doing, and that is the Children and Youth Master Plan. And so, as I said, we'll be kicking off this work this year, and, and it will be in partnership with the county and the community as well as local business leaders, which will be led by Adobe, thankfully. We will start with a focus on the neighborhoods identified in the master plan. And I want to thank my colleagues, especially on the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee, for their support. We've discussed this multiple times. We've discussed it in a joint committee meeting with the county. And I also want to thank all my colleagues who joined in our longevity walks and/or supported the Plaza, Plaza Azul Farmers Market here at City Hall. And a special, special thank you to Councilmember Torres and his staff for all of his work and partnership on Plaza Azul, as well as taking on the longevity walks this year and beyond so that it will live past my time on council.
Awesome. Thanks, Councilmember. Congratulations on that milestone. Really exciting and appreciate you driving that and finding outside resources as well. It's really exciting. I have your Blue Zone brochure sitting on my coffee table, actually. I point it out to people when they come over. So that's great work. Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the report. There's always a lot of really good information here, and I really appreciate it. You know, one of the things that I was thinking about, as you mentioned, you know, setting aside the 13 million, you know, for, you know, just to set it aside so that we have 35 by the end of the fiscal year. It also occurred to me is, as we start thinking about what's needed in future years, I know that there's a lot of unpredictability as to which way things will go, but I, I specifically was thinking about many of the measures and, you know, at the time of which things will sunset. So I know that Councilmember Torres talked a little bit about, you know, taxes and fees and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, I'm just wondering, I know you do the five-year forecast, but, you know, at some point, we're going to have to think about, you know, whether things get extended or not. So I'd like to hear a little bit more when you come back during the budget timeframe to, to, you know, at least let us know, when is the appropriate time that these things are going to come up? Because I think that it, it also helps as you're looking at the, you know, five-year forecast. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, thank you for all the work that has really been done on animal care services. And Matt and his team have really done a lot of good work. I want to mention that the animal care and services license fee is a, is a good idea. I would, um, like to see sort of the differences between a fee waiver based on zip code, which would only apply to certain areas versus it being income-based, because I know that there are a lot of people, you know, who maybe, I mean, if you happen to fall just outside that zip code, right? It, it's sort of like inequitable, at least that's how I interpret it. So I think that if it was income-based, then it would be a more broader, more equitable kind of thing. And you mentioned some of the programs that already do that. To me, it seems like it would be at least a, a test pilot to, to see, hey, you know, even if you wanted to try it for a year, it doesn't work, you know? To me, that would be something that I would see as, as, you know, a, a better way of trying to get good information to find out, you know, more, more of the details that some of the council members are asking for. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Just a quick question on, on slide eight, I think it was. I'm not sure if you can pull it up, but, or you probably don't need to pull it up, but you mentioned the janitorial contract and some issues there, and I think allocating, I think it was 1.2 million or whatever it was. Do you happen to know if the workers for the janitorial company, if they were paid or, or did, how did the company handle that as it relates to the challenges they had with the, their?
Yes, so the workers were absolutely paid. I mean, that's the assumption. I think the invoice just got paid later than where it should have been paid. But the, it just, the, the payment actually occurred in fiscal year 2324 instead of 2223. So it was related to invoices received in April and May was a, a piece of, of why we had to do the adjustment this year. But my understanding is it was, it was, yeah, administrative issue between us and the contractor, but nothing related to the employees themselves.
Okay, okay. And I asked because.
As per the agreement.
Okay. I'm glad it was seamless for the employees, and I would hate that, that, you know, there's some issues like this that they would impact the employees in their lives. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilwoman Batra?
Thank you, Jim, for the detail and extremely accurate report. I had told you at the time of the budget last year that your track record of being able to make these projections is so good, and I would not want it to be anything different, but for hoping that this year, there will be inaccuracy of kind, which will, because we were predicting, potentially deficit. I'm so glad that you brought a report, which is a very happy report. You have not asked any mid-course corrections despite the line items changing. Everything we proposed to do is still on track to be done. We are not going to have any additional deficit as a result of what we are doing, increase in expenses or decrease in any of those. So congratulations for keeping your track record going. I do have a couple of items I want to ask clarification on. At the time of the budget, one of the areas I was very concerned about in my district, and I requested a million dollar for the safety project, electrical lights and all that in the Via Hoffmonte area. Thank you for getting that million-dollar grant from CDBG and keeping that project on track. I recently met with all the residents and the owners of the properties in there. They are greatly appreciative of all the work city has done to make them safer. Regarding the animal shelter project, I think we have proposed that we do the fee waiver, and I think with, like Vice Mayor, my suggestion would be to keep evaluating in terms of income-based rather than geography-based, because that's the fairest way we help the people who need help. Now, if we do this program, do you see any positive from this one in terms of either saving something elsewhere, either in any other program? Or have we found a, a positive unintended consequence of doing this one that we are likely to save some money somewhere else or get something more effective? Matt may need to walk down.
And yeah, Matt has any ideas. I, I don't know that we would necessarily see cost savings. I think, you know, what the benefit could potentially be is you're bringing more people into the fold to get a license, and so that's a good thing. That means you would have more, you know, folks accounted for into the system, and you would have more folks potentially, you know, spay and neutering their, their pets and having a rabies certificate, which would be the most important thing. So that could be a, you know, one of the sort of programmatic out, out, outcomes. I don't know how big that would be. I don't know if you'd see really cost savings potentially, but, um, yeah, so I think, I think Matt agrees.
Matt agrees? Okay. Take that.
Matt trained me well, so that's why I'm saying that.
Okay. And the comments which were made before by my colleague here about the Med 30, I continue to support that with the level of activities which is needed to support our unsheltered, sheltered, everybody, and that activity is very important, so I continue to support. I did that at the time of the budget, and I continue to support that one again today. And there's one item in terms of your unemployment rate has gone up from 2.4 to 4%, which is still better than the state of California, as it has always been. Where does the line item, I would read, the negative impact in terms of the revenue about that unemployment rate rising, if there is a place to read?
Yeah, I don't, so the unemployment rate itself is just, is, you know, it's, it's interesting thing. So what you really, what we care about the most is number of people that are employed. So that's, that's, that's going up. So the more people that are employed, you know, that's how it, it drives revenue. So when we look at the different economists that help us with the forecasting, employment growth is one of the main things. You know, I think unemployment would be a reflection of some of the layoffs that we've been seeing, but also, you know, theoretically, if you have jobs going up and your unemployment goes up, that means more folks are technically entering into the workforce, so that not necessarily a negative thing if the unemployment rate goes up, if the number of people employed are also going up. I think it's still an indication of relative softness. I think the unemployment, the number of employed people who is only up less than a percent year over year. So I think my big takeaway is that it's a, it is definitely a softer employment environment than it had been previously. And so we expect to see that reflected in sales tax with lower growth. And I think our tentative estimates are so that you would sort of end this fiscal year slightly lower than where we ended last fiscal year, but that's part of our projections. But I think that's, and Selena was reminding me, that's probably where you would start to see it first would be in sales tax. So that, you see a slowing growth in sales tax, which is what we're kind of seeing.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking forward to the study session, because several people have approached during this time suggesting some investments we can make and increase our revenue. And, and I think we'll discuss more in detail at the study session, but I really like those suggestions because nothing is better than increasing our revenue rather than looking towards the cost cuts here and there and revenue enhancers. We're willing to make more investments as long as they're proven, okay? So hoping to look forward to having that discussion in the budget session. Thank you again for all the great work you've done in the report and even more accurately having your projections, which keep us on the positive track.
Well, I wish I could take all the credit for their, for their projections, but a lot of people at this table are really the ones that keep me in line, that I arm wrestle with on a daily basis about what they should be.
I modify my compliment. Congratulations and thank you to the team which you lead, okay, for doing that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember. Jim, just wanted to ask about the risk we may face around commercial property reassessment. What's your current thinking on how exposed to that we are and how it may play out over the coming year, or whatever the right timeframe is?
I mean, the short answer is I don't know. And that's the trickiest thing about the commercial side of the property tax, there's just not easily translatable data that results in projections. So, you know, we report residential property transactions, that's sort of data set that goes back forever, it's reported on, on a regular basis. Commercial property changes hands, you know, much less frequently. You know, we do have relatively less exposure in San Jose than compared to maybe other major businesses because we are sort of more real estate residential than we are commercial broadly, so we're a little bit less impacted, but we do expect to see an impact. I think the feeling is that that impact is probably going to hit more in the 25, 26 range and not the 24, 25 range.
Yeah, I'm hearing the same.
Which makes it even trickier to outreach. I know that, you know, we're talking to our Planning Building Code Enforcement Director, certainly nervous about that in, in that environment, so we're, we're thinking about that, and we're trying to, to be, I mean, we got to be careful because you don't want to be too conservative. Property tax is such a large revenue category that we can't be too, too defensive there. So we got to find the right way to be defensive, a little bit conservative, but still not leaving money that could have otherwise been put on the, the table. So that'll be our challenge.
Yeah, understood. I'm also hearing what you are about timeframe. Do you have an analysis of how many leases and total square footage come up over the next 18 months? That to me feels like an obvious trigger for a property tax reassessment, right? If, if major tenants don't renew.
Hi, Selena Ubando, Assistant to the City Manager. I was actually just at a property tax meeting yesterday, and Larry Stone was there speaking to all of us. And one of the things he was talking about was that the county, the Census Office as well, is really worried about the commercial reassessments. So the county is actually opening their reassessment portal for commercial properties to start asking for their buildings to be reassessed five months earlier than they usually do because they want to get ahead of the game. They, they as well, they kept telling us, though, when everyone's trying to ask for them to make predictions, he kept saying, I can tell you what happened in the past, I can tell you what's happening now, I will not make predictions about the future. Everyone tried to get him to do that. So they are saying that hopefully, though, as this portal is opening, they hopefully start getting a little bit more information, and as that is available, they will definitely start passing it on to us. We meet quarterly with them. And he also did discuss, he actually brought up San Jose's vacancy rates for office buildings. He did bring that up as one of his talking points, that we have a high vacancy rate.
That we have a high rate of vacancy, yeah, okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that we will have some advance warning. It's good to know that you're meeting quarterly and that they're opening the window early, so at least we'll, we'll get an early indication, which may lead to adjustments in terms of what we want to do here. It's definitely the biggest concern I see out on the horizon just over the next couple of years here. Okay, that was all I had. I don't see any other hands from colleagues. Thank you all again for your great work on the mid-year report. And with that, I believe we're ready to vote.
Oh, I can't see it. Motion passes unanimously?
Great. Thank you all again. Okay. We are on to item 3.4, which is the 2324 City Council Focus Area Second Quarter Status Report, and we'll kick off with a staff presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor. City Council members, members of the public and city staff, Dolan Beckel here, Chief of Staff for the City Manager. So like the previous presentation, while staff are settling in, I'll get us moving because I know after this topic, we also have a study session, potentially the last study session during Tuesday, to occur, so I'm going to keep us moving. So I'm going to keep us moving. Today, we are providing the City Council Focus Area Quarterly Status Report covering the second quarter of the fiscal year from October 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. Joining me in the box are the Focus Area Executive Sponsors, who you can see up there, and they'll introduce themselves during the presentation. Senior staff are in the audience as well to answer any questions later today. This report updates the council and the community on the four City Council Focus Areas approved by council, those being, one, increasing community safety, two, reducing unsheltered homelessness, three, cleaning up our neighborhoods, and four, attracting investment in jobs and housing. This slide serves a reminder that in addition to driving these key focus area outcomes for our community, city staff and our partners continue to deliver 98 core services and 264 programs for our residents who rely on them on a daily basis. I'll now turn the presentation over to Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox.
Thank you, Dolan. As Dolan mentioned, I'm Lee Wilcox and I am the executive sponsor of increasing community safety. Over the last quarter, we did not see significant change in the number of city residents rating San Jose as a very safe or somewhat safe place. Fewer residents who reported the city was somewhat unsafe or unsafe cited continued to cite homelessness, theft, crime as the top reasons. So from first quarter to the second quarter, we did not see substantial change. I do want to point out this slide and the, the lack of data under performance for property crime rates and violent crime rates. As we've mentioned in the past, in a few different informational memorandums as well as PIS FIS, we are currently in the process of transitioning to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, referred to as NIBRs. This is a requirement from the Department of Justice and the federal government that all police departments throughout the country transition to this. As part of that transition, it has necess, it has required us to do a lot of manual transition of records to be put into that system. And thus, our error rate right now is considerably high. This is not uncharted territory as all the other cities that have already gone through this process are in similar situations such as us. So we've been working with our vendor as well as staff in the Bureau of Technical Services to address this. We are nearly caught up with part of the backlog and I do think for the third quarter report, we will be able to share some of this data. But we're happy police department's on hand as, as well as I am to answer any questions around this transition. And we will be updating the PIS FIS committee during the next bi-monthly police department report on this issue. With that said, some of the data that we do get on a daily basis from the police department that still does need to be verified, does not indicate a high level of change in any crime throughout the city from quarter one to quarter two. Property crime, larceny, burglary also appear to be slightly declining. However, some vehicle thefts appear to be slightly increasing. For violent crime, rape and robbery reports continue to be steady from quarter one to quarter two. Thus far in the year, the city has seen 16 homicides throughout the city. This is a small decline. At this time last year, we were over 20. So some improvement, but not a lot improvement. I do want to say that because of the data not being available, and one of the things that our execution team around increasing community safety has continued to look at is our 911 response rate. And so while it's not on this slide, I do want to say for priority one calls, we have a goal of six minutes for priority one. In the first quarter of the year, we were about seven and a half minutes in responding, so slightly over that goal. For the second quarter, we were at seven minutes, so slight improvement. And then for priority two calls, we do have a goal of 11 minutes. And in the first quarter, we were roughly 25 minutes and have improved by a minute in the second quarter to 24 minutes. Sorry. And then lastly, I do want to state on the traffic fatalities, that there were nine traffic fatalities over the second quarter, bringing us up to a total of 26 so far in the city. For this slide, I want to showcase our accomplishments over the last quarter. We've hired 31 police officers and two CSOs throughout the second quarter. As of January, we still have 122 vacancies and for sworn police officers and 11 CSOs remain. Police Department has launched the organized retail, retail theft task force as well as the other week with council's approval, a pass the catalytic converter theft ordinance. In addition, DOT's Vision Zero team continues to work and reduce traffic fatalities. This includes receiving a prestigious grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, which will fund street safety improvements at the cities for intersections that have received the most fatality and severe injuries over the last five years. And then lastly, throughout the next quarter, our team has three large focus areas. The first being around recruiting and hiring of San Jose Police Department officers, the city and county 911-988 transfer pilot, which we'll be discussing in a few weeks, as well as the scoping for our automated speed enforcement program and finalizing and finishing 14 pedestrian safety projects that have been outlined to the Transportation and Environment Committee over the last several months. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Omar Passins.
Thank you, Lee. Good, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, members of the public. My name is Omar Passins, Deputy City Manager for Homelessness and Executive Sponsor for this reducing unsheltered homelessness focus area. The city has long worked with many regional partners to address homelessness. And as noted during the budget process, the city's role with regard to homelessness includes many areas in addition to the performance metrics listed here. As a threshold matter, I just would like to, excuse me, thank the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing for their partnership in developing the data needed to produce this scorecard. The rate of inflow within the city specifically, so that's that top line measure that's listed there, between, for the period listed is 1.68 to one, which is down from even higher, roughly two to one in terms of households. I mean, functionally, what that means is the number of people, the number of households that are entering homelessness while still greater than one to one is coming, coming down, which is a testament to many of the activities going on both in the city driving forward and, and as a region. It also underscores why the city's support for the regional homelessness prevention system is so critical and why we continue to seek additional ways to increase prevention efforts. You can also see in boxes one and two, under the Performance Measure section, that prevention and permanent housing are extremely effective tools because they keep people off the streets at extremely high rates. Boxes three and four help demonstrate the city's ongoing commitment to increasing temporary supply so that the people who live on San Jose streets in places that are not meant for human habitation on any given night have a safe place while those permanent options are identified. In fact, the city of San Jose is responsible with its partners for the lion's share of the increase in those temporary sort of safer opportunities in our region. This slide presents insights about performance across the four measures as well as key programs, budget snapshots for specific bodies of work and actual items that were completed in the last quarter. In future reports, that last row will include a comparison of what we plan to accomplish versus what we actually accomplished. One fundamental point to understand, there is not enough money to fund all of the off-street parking or interim housing that would be needed, nor all of the services that the more than 4,000 people in our community need. So while we continue to push for permanent solutions and to develop safe opportunities that are off the street, part of what we have to do as a city is better manage the impacts of this crisis on our neighborhoods. That includes people who are experiencing homelessness, who are part of our neighborhoods. It also includes business owners and everybody else in our community and protecting our environment. In future reports, the bottom row will compare what we plan to actually accomplish with the previous quarter. Because it is a new addition at this time, it lists key accomplishments like the development of the city's first implementation plan for addressing homelessness. This, this final slide provides descriptions of several areas, including critical programs and housing that address among the most important aspects of, of addressing homelessness, preventing it and permanently ending it. From a policy perspective, one key item that's highlighted here is the development of a framework for shared public spaces to bring back to council that will establish and refine criteria for where people may not sleep, where they should be allowed to sleep overnight, including things like safe outdoor sleeping sites, and guiding principles that apply equally to all residents who use public buildings and property. Critical plans in this next quarter include, you know, three notices of funds availability for more permanent housing, awarding the Bariessa RV supportive parking contract to move towards opening that site, and pushing forward on two key expansions of interim housing. With that, I'll turn it over to Angel Rios.
Thank you, Omar. Angel Rios, Deputy City Manager. And I'll address cleaning up our neighborhoods. And this is a, this is a section, a body of work that Omar and I co-lead, I handle, I oversee the neighborhood blight and Omar oversees the encampment management. Beautify SJ Neighborhood Blight Reduction Programs are the core delivery system for the city's blight reduction and beautification strategy that focuses on working collaboratively with neighborhood associations, businesses, and residents to improve the cleanliness of our city. From an outcome perspective, looking at the outcome measures, cleanliness perception for our city overall and your neighborhood increased slightly from quarter one to quarter two and remained the same for downtown. With respect to performance, Beautify SJ Blight Response Times, turning to the BSJ Blight Response Times, graffiti removal and encampment trash services remain above the target, while illegal dumping response times have improved, going from 67% in quarter one to 76% in quarter two. The code enforcement case backlog continues to decline, but at a modest pace. As noted in the memo, we recommend modifying the code enforcement case backlog measure in future reports. Instead of the current format, which shows the percentage change in backlog cases from quarter to quarter, will show the total number of cases in the code enforcement case backlog for the quarter. We think this will better contextualize and total, the total caseload and will also allow us to break down the backlog by different case types such as building, code, substandard housing, solid waste, and graffiti, which may give us insight into our progress on case types most relevant to blight reduction. The performance of 311 satisfaction has remained stable from quarter one to quarter two. In comparison to the corresponding periods last year, three out of the four services have seen an increase in customer satisfaction scores. The SJ 311 team is actively collaborating with the service teams to analyze and devise strategies aimed at enhancing customer satisfaction scores, aligning with the target of achieving a closer to 80% customer satisfaction rate. Here, here we have our key budget programs, current resources, and in the last row, our key accomplishments for the last quarter. I'll note a few highlights. With respect to Beautify San Jose, in the last slide, we see the improvement in the illegal dumping response times. We note here that along with the reduction in response times, we've also completed almost 1,000 more service requests in quarter two than in quarter one and have made progress in installing 300 illegal dumping sign deterrence. Looking at code enforcement's key accomplishments, the FAST program completed focus areas one and two last quarter. For these areas, staff serviced over 6,300 parcels and saw a 13% reduction in blight violations after the first inspection and 60% reduction in blight violations after the first citation. Staff also gained key insights and feedback from residents while only approximately 2% of properties received citation. Staff has added a warning notice, step ahead of the citation for the remaining focus area. I'm getting some feedback, so I apologize for. SJ 311 in quarter two, a significant, in quarter two, we had a significant focus for SJ 311 and it was dedicated to advancing the development of the New Vehicle Concerns Service. This service aims to streamline the process for residents to report issues related to parking violations or other vehicle-related matters. And on the next slide, we will discuss the rollout plans for this service. On this slide, we have our goals for the current quarter and I'll, I'll note some highlights. With Beautify SJ, you can see in our planned accomplishments for BSJ, we're continuing to focus on improvements in the legal dumping response times with the target of meeting the 80% goal in quarter three. We also plan to revisit encampment management abatement criteria to update our setback guidelines. And as an evolving, as an evolving city service, periodic review and updates are necessary to keep up with lessons learned and incorporate best practices. As for code, we're proceeding with implementation of the FAST program, targeting areas three and four for quarter three. Area three is located in the Casell neighborhood and area four is located in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood, both in District Five. For SJ 311, we have plans to deploy two new services during this quarter. Street sweeping, look up and the sewer issues services are planned, service are planned for deployment this quarter, followed closely by the Vehicle Concerns Service, plan to go live in March, April timeframe. Street sweeping look up will allow residents to look up their street sweeping schedule and the sewer issues will allow residents to report problems with the sewer system. And with that, I'll turn this over to Rob.
Good afternoon, Council. Rob Lloyd, WC Manager. And I shared this focus area with my colleague Rosalyn Huey, WC Manager and Acting Housing Director. The city continues to see conditions holding down the volume of housing entitlement and completed units. Interest rates, insurance, and construction material costs tied directly to the 62% reduction in entitlements quarter to quarter previous year and the 43% lesser completed housing units for this quarter ended compared to previous year. The Cost of Development Study Session in October of 2023 provided detailed information and feedback from the development community on the state of development. Staff is exploring alternatives to kickstart activity and to make the city's processes easier. Speed of housing permits missed targets and declined due to a staffing vacancy and focus on cellular permitting with required deadlines. PBC is monitoring and working to get close to goal in quarter three and current trends have us tracking towards goal.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Rosalyn Huey, Deputy City Manager, Acting Housing Director. And just real briefly to make a note regarding our job start rates. And so we're glad to share with you that the rate is up 1.1%. That actually, we know that represents the very modest growth given our current economic conditions. And as it relates to downtown activity rates, we are very pleased to share this increase both over quarter two of 2022, which you can see is a 51% increase in terms of downtown activity and actually a 39% increase from quarter one. So we're very excited about this measure. Clearly, people are coming downtown more often and feeling more comfortable there. We know that during quarter two, this is probably mostly due to the array of holiday activity and events being held in our downtown.
On the next slide, for the housing units added to the city, work was completed related to the Cost of Development Study Session and critically, the approval of the city's housing element by the state. On activity, you see 235 affordable housing units were permitted in quarter two. Staff dedicated to affordable housing production are concentrating on regular coordination sessions across city teams to ensure those units are prioritized and occur quickly. For speed of housing permit reviews, you see process improvements that increase self-service options and that accelerate permitting for public, self-start and SJE plans for building permits, the fire marshal's online inspection scheduling, refreshed website and policies are live, and intake appointments were eliminated to reduce steps. Just to give some, some special credit to the team, processing currently is down to two days within receipt versus 90 days prior before our work and focus on this effort.
And in our downtown, our focus continues to be improving the entire downtown district, including storefront activations, programming, and marketing throughout the downtown. Additionally, our downtown manager and coordinator are conducting corporate outreach visits to top employers located downtown. And highlights included in Q2 include maintaining the downtown walking beat shift with coverage of 70%, which is up 50%. of 70%, which is up 54% year over year, the opening of Palier Park, and the encampment resolution along the Guadalupe River, where over 90 of our residents were moved into shelter.
So for our last slide, on housing units added to the city, city council considerations include residential incentives, adaptive reuse, and continuing progress on the fee framework that impacts development. Essential work for this quarter also involves moving forward with our Certified Housing Element Plan and the work that it creates for staff, as well as hiring staff focused on affordable housing. Council has been clear about filling those key positions. Updating the accessory dwelling unit ordinance makes significant, must make significant progress this quarter to finish in quarter four as projected. For speed of housing permit reviews, we have considerations related to responding to builder's remedy, and will be bringing forward pieces of the housing elements for implementation to city council. On deliverables, you also see added process improvements, work for permitting ease and speed, and these are investments for both public and staff.
So as it relates to downtown, the areas that we're going to be focusing on in Q3 is city staff, actually in several different departments, including Office of Economic Development, Cultural Affairs, Police Department, and Code Enforcement, will be spending a significant time when working on the unpermitted vendor, vendor issue throughout our downtown, and particularly focusing on some of the spring events that we know are coming up at our venues. We will be bringing to city council, actually next month, the extension of the downtown high-rise incentive program. We will be implementing the San Pedro pedestrian mall law that council recently took action on, and we're really excited that we'll be able to execute some on three leases for our first pop-up retail spaces throughout the downtown, so very excited about that. And very excited, in March, we'll be supporting what we know will be a very successful Nvidia GTC conference, so staff will be supporting that effort. And then lastly, there'll be continued support on the acquisition of property for the PMI project, Home Key project located in downtown. And with that, I'm turning it over to Dolan Beckel.
Thank you, Rosalyn. That concludes our reports. We're available for questions, as is senior staff in the audience. Thank you for your time.
Great, thanks so much. Really helpful to get that snapshot of performance and what's ahead. Let's go to public comment first.
I have no cards for this item.
Okay, great. So we are back to council. We'll go to Councilor Davis.
Thank you all for this report. I appreciate all the work that goes into tracking this info, as well as adjusting operations in response to these and the other measures, the, I'm sure many other measures that you track. Regarding increasing community safety, in particular, the performance measures, Lee, since you report on this, I'm going to ask you, and you can phone a friend, I know he's up there. Why are we doing quarter-over-quarter comparisons instead of year-over-year comparisons for the same quarter on those? We do year-over-year, if I remember correctly, for the attracting investment in jobs and housing. So I'm just wondering if it's more useful to do it quarter-over-quarter versus year-over-year?
Yeah, I would think for a policymaking board such as yourself, year-over-year would probably be more valuable. I would say that there was a lot of conversation with this transition committee about quarter by quarter to see if there were trends that shifted year to year and something that PD needed a look at. I can tell the council that, you know, the Assistant Chief, as well as the Deputy Chiefs up there and the captains, look at this on a daily, if not weekly, basis to make those decisions, you know, on an operational basis. So year-over-year is, is probably a better approach, council member. I would say, as I mentioned too, I think, you know, there's property crime rates and violent crime rates. Sometimes some of those are outside of our control, and so I know several of us have talked about looking at other measures. As I mentioned, our, you know, our cabinet execution team and cabinet, we've looked at 911 response times pretty diligently, as well as aggravated assaults, which paints a little bit of a better picture of, of crime throughout a city. So I think we're open to those type of changes.
Thank you. I, I think it's really important for us to, to get your perspectives on what you think is more actionable for us, for policy, and also for you in operations, and if those are different, I'd appreciate that discussion as well. On, on this topic or, or any of, of the topics, I think that's really important. I've identified one. I, I really think the scorecard and the dashboard is trying to do double duty, and I'm not sure that it's, I'm not sure that it's, it's doing us any favors by doing that, because it's both for operations, which is more for data-driven decisions for the city manager's office, and then also to help us inform policy. So I think we need to figure that out. Obviously, we have to hold the city manager accountable and responsible for effective and efficient operations, so there's some overlap there. I don't think we're quite there yet, but I do think that having these reports every quarter is maybe a little bit of overkill, which is why I have the memo that we put out, and it did come out real, we put it in real late last night, so if, I'm not sure if everybody got a chance to, to read it. But I do think that we need to align this with the, the study, the focus areas on the policies that we've already passed. So I've identified the city and county plan and homelessness as one of those areas for alignment in my memo, as well as just bringing the scorecard back to us just twice a year instead of four times a year. I think that would help with the load balancing for all of you doing all of the work and informing the policy, because we're not making, we're making policy changes and plans for those policy changes really more at the budget time than any other time, and then having one more check-in, you know, six months later, I think makes sense. But other than that, I just think you guys are doing a lot of work quarterly to come to us and to do these reports, as opposed to just keeping the scorecards and dashboards updated online and all that. So that's what's included in my, in my memo, and that's what I'm moving right now. I am moving my memo.
Okay. Let me go to Councilman Bortiz first, and then I'll offer a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I want to begin my comments by thanking staff from all of our departments, be it PR&amp;S, Housing, Public Works, OED, and DOT. Thank you for sharing your expertise and for taking on the challenge of focus in the face of dozens of core services and programs you're tasked with delivering every day. I agree with the memo from Councilmember Davis, sorry I didn't second, I was a little slow there, recommending that we hear this report by annually, and I think it's important to give staff the necessary time to actually execute on the deliverables we're asking of them and receive through reports that carry up to data such as numbers from the County Office of Supportive Housing. There's a lot of good updates to read and speak to, but I'll focus and speak to ones important to myself and to my constituents. In the focus area of reducing unsheltered homelessness, it's exciting to see that the statistic, statistic that many of us quote here on this die is that every one individual we house, two or more become homeless, is, is starting to no longer be true. And this fills me with hope, knowing that the choices of both housing first and prioritizing the construction of affordable housing and prevent, funding prevention services are demonstrating positive results. I also want to share credit with our school districts and our community-based organizations who've taken on the challenge of recognizing instability, especially for our children and families, and are making referrals to our offices or agencies that can help. Although we are seeing this drop, a key priority has been addressing youth homelessness. As I've learned, that Eastside Union High School District has approximately 900 unhoused students compared to 300 in 2020. It's harrowing to know that Spotlight has named East San Jose as the epicenter of youth homelessness here in the county. As we look towards metrics that measure success in this focus area, I'd like to understand how staff identifies and disaggregates unhoused youth within data reporting, and if there's a way to include this story with a dashboard. Any thoughts about that from staff?
Councilman Bortiz, I think one of the, one of the benefits of the partnership with the County Office of Supportive Housing that provides that continuum of care, overall regional leadership, is, is the, the ability to sort of think through how to disaggregate the different youth populations. I think the, the, excuse me, the statistic you mentioned may be related to sort of a McKinney-Vento definition, which, not to get too far in the weeds, but is, is not the same as the unsheltered population that we see on the streets. So I think part of what we really need to do in, in partnership with the county is, is get that information, work with the Senate Clerk of County Office of Ed, and those two bodies to understand how we support, support our youth. I think you saw it in the Children and Youth Master Plan that, that the team brought forward before, and, and we're continuing to look at ways to sort of even further align with the county on, on that, those youth homelessness issues.
That's, that's great. And what about essentially disaggregating the data to learn, you know, essentially, just having a clear picture on who is actually homeless, whether it's a youth, a veteran, someone leaving incarceration, which I know we see a lot for youth in juvenile hall, or, you know, for instance, I know that a lot of LGBTQ communities suffer from this as well. Is there, do we, are we disaggregating this information?
My apologies. Yes, I thought I had my mind on youth because you had mentioned that specifically, but we currently actually do get disaggregated data on a variety of these populations, veterans, homeless youth, seniors. So that, that information comes to us, and I think part of our challenge is having the robust alignment of, of resourcing even within the city to address these issues.
Okay, thank you. Then I know, obviously, we have safety nets in place. The challenges of instability are traumatizing and can have lasting effects on, on these individuals, especially our youth. In the focus area of increasing community safety, I do just want to say that I am interested in making sure that we are expanding the trust program and exploring alternative first responders. But I also want to understand, you know, every, every neighborhood association, my residents are saying that we don't have enough officers to address the day-to-day concerns that they're experiencing in, in the neighborhood. Are we looking at what challenges are, that we're being faced with as we recruit police officers?
Happy to answer that, answer that, council member. So I would say I think there's some short-term stuff that we're doing, and then long-term stuff. In the short term, we have really, over the last several months, shifted some of our focus in how we're recruiting officers. I'd say there's a lot of new marketing and outreach ideas that the department is working through, including finishing up an RFP around social media rebranding. The number of applicants we get through social media is, is quite a large number, and so refreshing that and looking where we spend those dollars and where people see those advertisements, as well as partnerships with a lot of local organizations. In the long term, as a execution team and cabinet, and I don't want to say too much, because obviously we'll receive direction in the March message and come forward with a proposed budget, but we are looking specifically around three buckets of really priming the pipeline of police officers, and so really looking at that pipeline throughout the community and how we onboard people, looking at one-time money to help increase the marketing and outreach. As our applicant pool increases, we will see 43 officers join in the third quarter this year. And then lastly, work around our laterals and really trying to incent, incentivize laterals to come across. That is something that we feel we could do a better job at and that we'll be focused on, and you'll likely see as a part of the budget process in the coming year.
Okay, that's, that's great. Forty-three new officers. That's, that's, that's great. Good to hear an update on the recruitment. I don't know if the Police Department has anything to add, or assistance? No? Okay, all right, great. And finally, the focus area of cleaning up our, our neighborhoods. I wanted to share thanks with both our Beautify San Jose Division and our code enforcement team for taking any of my suggestions to, to couple the FAST program with dumpster days in our neighborhoods, effectively providing an outlet for our residents to hopefully be in, in compliance. The work, the work of our Beautify San Jose team is incredibly impactful, and residents report that interactions with the teams are among the most positive, especially at dumpster days and, and the many Caltrans freeway cleanups. And my team appreciates that support, be it, you know, our monthly litter cleanups or helping address those, those hotspots in, in East San Jose. So, you know, that, this is a topic that, you know, when I was at the doors campaigning, everyone said that Eastside was full of blight, and I really appreciate the city, as well as our mayor, prioritizing that, because each one of our residents should live in a clean and safe neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thanks, council member. Councilman Batra?
Thank you for this extensive report. There's a lot to unpack there. I just want to pursue a couple of items here. The number one, in this report, is there anywhere where I can see the impact of these so-called de-escalation teams in terms of having impact on our crime and safety area? Because this is, again, to get ready for the budget, people are approaching us that we support more of the trust teams. Is there anything in their lead which tells us the impact of those teams?
So there's nothing in this report. I will say, at the end of February, staff will be coming forward with council direction around analyzing our 911 events or just all events, and I do think that will show a pretty compelling picture of just the volume of calls, where an alternative response could possibly be used, and the importance of whether it's trust, MCAT, or all of those teams have on partnering with our officers in those incidences. So I, I think you'll get a picture of that at the end of February versus this report.
Okay, thank you very much. Looking forward to that. The other one that we have, Omar, this Ending Homelessness 2025 Report, is there any projections based on our current approaches where we may have the unsheltered or homeless numbers in the future years in San Jose? We know what it is today, or at least believe that we know, that roughly around 4,000, and if, if anything, it's probably less, we are expecting more than that. So is there any of the projections available for the future?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Batra. I think you're, you're asking about the regional 2025 community plan to end homelessness, not our, not, not the city specifically, right?
That's, but whatever we may have about San Jose would be helpful, even better, because we do talk about, a lot of our programs are based on what we have in the city of San Jose, 4,000 unsheltered. That's why we're building EIH program. Do we have any idea where we see San Jose to be, two years down the road, three years down the road?
So the, the regional community plan that you're asking about doesn't, it, it has goals that are set for that sort of five-year window, and as part of our implementation plan, we set sort of annualized goals, but you're asking about sort of trend prediction, projections? And honestly, I think the answer right now is that we, we don't actually have those trend, trend projections that you're asking for.
Okay. Would it be even possible to attempt that?
So I think we, so here's the thing, we need what you're asking for. Like, make no mistake about it, we, we need to improve data on a number of axes to be able to do it, and fortunately, we're having a sort of monthly conversation with the County Office of Supportive Housing to get there. We, we need a couple of tweaks to have a better understanding of how many people are living outside and where they are, and, and frankly, and this is harder, but to go back a little bit and get a retrospective, so we can actually have some trend lines. The, the plain truth is, we're just not, not there yet. It would be helpful, though.
Okay, okay. All right. So I, I think we agree that the need for it, and you got some effort going and trying to get that there, because that would help us take care of the, the policies which we need to develop. Now, the question in this report, I think I may have missed it, you just mentioned, we talk about how many homeless there are, how many we removed and all that. Is there anywhere an indicator of the satisfaction of the neighborhoods in which these, our interim actions are in place?
Councilmember Batra, I, not directly, in the quarterly survey that goes out to the community, we ask questions, perception questions, but we don't specifically kind of ask a satisfaction index. So I think we'd have to think about that some more and determine if, if and how it's appropriate to, to ask that question in any future survey.
So I would suggest that we should So I would suggest that we should try to get something, not necessarily satisfaction, acceptability or something, because a lot of our success in being able to do what we are trying to do is placing the homeless in proper interim housing, but the community around it accepting it so that every time we want to build a site, we're not dealing with a protest, we are dealing with a welcome sign that they can actually be coming and asking, hey, please build one in my neighborhood. So I don't know what exactly that measure should be or how should it be collected. I would strongly recommend that we try to find a way to get that piece of information for us to be able to make sense. Yeah.
So, Councilmember, thank you for the clarification. So with that clarification, we do ask the neighborhoods if they think homelessness has improved or gotten worse. So we do have that data, and we can consider how we bring that forward in any future reports.
Okay. So I think we need to publicize how we are collecting that data and what it is showing, because every time we try to build something new, we really need to be able to use that data to prove that, hey, when we do this thing, it actually improves our neighborhoods, and the neighborhood, hopefully, they will understand it and support it in the future. I think I will leave it with those comments on the questions, and my concern continues to stay, especially in, you know, most of you know, the South San Jose portion, trying to build new homeless shelters, and the community isn't buying into it. And I need to find a way that you can help us get there. And at the moment, we don't have it. So that's nothing to do with the measure itself or the target itself, but that's the issue which we need to be addressing. So thanks for these reports, and thank you very much for presenting it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Councilmember. Let me offer a few comments, and then I'll turn to my remaining colleagues. So first is, well, thank you, and I think seeing the updates, as I mentioned, is helpful. While some of these don't move very frequently, a couple of them were quite exciting. Seeing the very significant increase in downtown visitation as compared to year to year, as I understand what that chart is showing, is worth further study and analysis of, assume it wasn't all the ice rink, but I do think bringing back the ice rink was quite a win. So there are some interesting insights to derive here. I do think there are some areas where we may still be confusing outcomes and performance measures, specifically the crime rates. As Lee mentioned, you know, we have very, there are a lot of things that go into what drives crime rates, and it's still a very robust area for research and debate, and we only have so much control there. Those to me really feel like they belong on the front, sorry, the top line as outcomes. We certainly care about property crime and violent crime rates as outcomes in the community. I would argue that performance measures would be more like hitting our hiring goals, retaining our officers, improving our response times through more staffing, but maybe use of technology or other techniques, things that are a little more within our control. Nothing's ever 100% within our control, but I would hope that our performance measures would really reflect areas where we're actually doing things to move the number directly, whereas a crime rate is such a lagging and kind of down-the-road indicator or outcome. Downtown walking shifts filled. So I may comment on some of that in my March budget message, and we'll see if the council supports, but I just feel like there are still a few places here where we are highlighting outcomes that are great to highlight but probably don't belong in the performance row. Did you want to comment on that?
I would just say, I think as an administration and a team, I think, obviously, the whole process of this last year was to, you know, and we're going to talk about it in the priority setting session, was really to try and focus on the most important things. So I think as a team, you guys and us, we have accomplished that. We were focused on four of the harder issues in the city. You know, how we get there, I think we're really open. I know, as I've mentioned, at least for my own execution team and cabinet, we're using a variety of different metrics. So I think we've all been trying to be true to what the transition committee's recommended, because a number of you were on those and shared those. But certainly, we see a lot of room for improvement, and, you know, specifically around things that we have more control over, the point to that outcome. So as an administration, I think we're very open to that and can definitely partner with all of you on that.
Okay, great. That sounds good to me. Look forward to continuing that conversation as we get through the budget process here. On a couple of the charts, and I'll take housing units added in the city, I find the percentage change a little obscuring because we don't know what the count is. And so I do think it might be helpful to understand the raw count, and it might be helpful to look at a longer time series. I'm not sure if Councilmember Davis was making this point about quarterly data. I think you were talking about comparing quarter to quarter versus the year prior quarter, I believe, was your point, but is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that point I also agree with, but I think that on some of these, understanding, having more data points and being able to look at a chart that's showing the data over a one-, two-year period with whatever the data points are that are appropriate, you might have monthly data for some of these, might actually give us a better sense of what the trends are. I don't think we should feel like there's some straitjacket here where we have to report them all as quarterly compared to the quarter before, or I would compare it to the quarter the year before, to Councilmember Davis's point. But I think in some of these, we would be well-served to just have more data points, just as we collected downtown foot traffic. You know, I believe, at least in the Downtown Vibrancy Committee that Councilor Torres and I co-chair, we're looking at monthly data points which are reported. And so having more points on the graph might help us better understand how much noise there is versus having, you know, just two data points to look at in some of these charts. Overall, though, I think we're achieving the goal of focus, to Lee's point, moving in the right direction with this. Now, to Councilmember Davis's memo, I'll support moving to twice-a-year reporting. I'm more interested in the managing execution or policy implementation than using these. I don't think these alone are going to necessarily inform policy as much, so I was more interested in signing up for 90-day milestones and deliverables around these key areas, and then being able to see 90 days later if we hit those milestones or if they're slipping, or why or why not. Some things lend themselves to that, others don't, I recognize that. Some are much slower timeframes. So I think twice-a-year, we should move to and see how it goes. I'm fine with that. On the community plan, though, I do want to just, I want to clarify, it seemed to me very clear from the transition committees and the budget process last year that both the council and the broader community felt very strongly about these North Star metrics of reducing unsheltered homelessness and reducing the impacts. And even as it is, I don't find that to actually be reflected as the outcome that we currently have in the chart. We have this ratio of inflow to outflow, which is a useful metric, a useful thing to track and understand, but has so many variables. And I just, I would be worried if we moved to the community planned goal, which, as I read, it is a 30% reduction in those becoming homeless, that that may not be the right North Star outcome to organize our work around, even though I agree with all the strategies in there, and I think we want to align ourselves with those strategies, and more of them should be reported as the performance metrics we're measuring, our work on those strategies. But I worry, I would worry if we just picked up that 30% reduction in the inflow, because that feels to me like an incomplete picture. So I just wanted to clarify where you were going with that one.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the chance to comment. So there are three pillars in the community plan to end homelessness, and we don't have all of those covered with our performance here. So I wanted to give staff a chance to discuss this, but I know that what we're tracking doesn't really align with that. So it's not necessarily just the goal of the community plan to end homelessness, but also all the pillars, so that we can oversee how well they're implementing the plan on all three pillars. So one is reducing impacts, right? One is prevention, and the third one, remind me what it is. I don't remember.
Housing.
The housing, right. So that's permanent housing. So there are three pillars for that, and I think that it's important for us to have measures and to track all three of those in, like, along the way towards the actual outcome, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's reasonable, and I think we've approved the plan. I think we are attempting from where it's appropriate for us as a city, and we have resources to implement many, if not all, of the strategies there. And we should track and hold ourselves accountable to that implementation. What I would worry about would be a shift that sort of has us measuring so many things that we aren't crystal clear on what I believe is the community's top priority and expectation for our city, which is that we are making steady, measurable gains in the reduction of the number of people outside. Now, there may have a lot of debates over which strategies, is it more prevention that's going to get us there, more shelter, more permanent housing? We can have that, we'll continue to have that debate. But I just want to make sure that that North Star of where we're going as the outcome doesn't get lost as we try to add what are many different strategies and metrics in that community plan. So it sounds like staff is, with the current direction, what, and there may be further direction through the budget message, but with the, if we adopt this memo today, what happens next?
Well, I think from the standpoint of the reducing unsheltered homelessness focus area, I think it seems pretty clear that there's enough information to continue to push, to get us towards reductions in unsheltered homelessness, while, as the council adopted in the implementation plan, measures that are specific to the three pieces that Councilmember Davis just said. So I think that the ability to do both of these things is in line with what we're pushing for right now. It doesn't decrease focus and also allows us to get both sides of that coin to get that number down.
Yeah, thank you, Omar. I think at a macro level, if you read Councilmember Davis's language, it gives us the direction to explore various things and come back. So what would we do? We'd explore the direction that, any direction we've been given here, as well as the memo, as well as what may be coming, as you just mentioned in the March budget message, and we'd explore and come back with options to address those things. I think, for example, something we've been talking about is, as Omar indicated, we finally feel confident we've wrangled HMIS in a way that what we report is as accurate as it can be. So in addition to the inflow-outflow, which gives us a certain level of insight, there can also be the total homelessness count month to month, which gives us insight, and we're finally confident in having that data. There's other things we would explore. So we would continue, what we would do is we'd continue forward with any briefings. We continue forward with continuing to roll out the dashboards on the website, which allow more data to be published and disaggregated, and we would come back in the fall, in September, with the opportunity to actually do a little bit more analysis and thoughtful thinking. I appreciate the recommendation to go to twice-a-year, because we have such a compressed timeframe to wrangle the data, analyze the data, produce a council report, get a council presentation ready, come to you, and be coherent, that we have almost zero time to do analysis, to be perfectly honest. So this gives us the time to do some thoughtful analysis and come back with some more thoughtful ways to show progress on outcomes and performance, as well as policy, and that's when we'd come back in September. In the interim, our goal is to release the first disaggregated dashboard for cleaning up our neighborhoods in March, and then complete the disaggregated dashboards by the end of summer. And that will also give a lot more data for people to look at and analyze.
Okay.
Can I add something there?
Go ahead.
I also wanted just to clarify, if we go to the semi-annual reporting, that will not stop us as the administration from coming to council on any given Tuesday or to a committee if we need to have the council do any policy considerations that will keep us nimble and keep us moving forward on the focus area.
Okay. And then, what progress are we making toward getting these dashboards up live and to the extent feasible, like the county dashboards, interactive for the public?
So the first page, the scorecard with the outcome and performance data, is live on the council priority website now. Our next step, which I apparently didn't make all that clear, so on the website, what we're planning on doing in March is publishing our first disaggregated set of data. So a lot of the questions, there's a lot more data that we have available than you see in the actual scorecard. So we want to publish that so it's available as open data in a usable form on our website, and we've published the four scorecards, but then we want to be able to allow people to disaggregate that and see by race, by location, by age, by income. The first rollout of that for beautifying our city, cleaning up our city, excuse me, cleaning up neighborhoods, excuse me, would be in March, and then we'd complete that rollout by the end of summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let me turn to Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentations from all of you on all of these focus areas. A few things. First, I want to echo the concerns about the quarter and quarter and it not being actually cumulative. If I'm looking at the traffic fatalities as an example, which is something I track quite a bit as it relates to Vision Zero, we had 17 in the first quarter, 26 in the second quarter, but that's 43. We should really be reporting the total number and not individual quarters, and then comparing it year over year or cumulative year over year. I just think those numbers are much more effective in how we're analyzing the data, and would love to see that going forward. Anytime you're looking at a budget, you're looking at it cumulative. So I look at this the same way, that we're looking at statistics that should be quarter plus quarter, and this is where we are now, not where I have to do the math and figure it out myself. We need to make it easy for someone like me and our residents who are watching this. Question for you, Lee, regarding the community safety numbers. We, under the traffic enforcement, there's 30 FTEs, and maybe this is for Paul Joseph, I don't know. Is that the traffic enforcement unit? And if so, I don't think you really have 30 people in, is that budgeted?
Yes, Councilmember. That is what is budgeted for that unit, and yes, you're also correct, it's not fully staffed at this time. It's about two-thirds staffed.
Okay. So we have how many traffic enforcement?
I believe it's about...
I was, I thought it was half of that, but I'm not going to question you.
About 18.
18, okay.
I believe, but don't hold me to that.
Okay. So that is the budget. I was excited, actually, to see that we might have 30 officers there, but we only have 18 or so. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? I think I'm done with you for the moment. I have questions regarding Vision Zero, so maybe DOT is up there. But first of all, I want to say thank you for funding last year in our budget, the grant rider for Vision Zero and traffic calming efforts, and we were able to get a federal grant of $12.9 million based on that individual who's in that seat. So that's fabulous. You already heard the report today that those intersections will be, they'll be worked on, are the four with the most fatalities in the city. So that's wonderful. The question I have for you, John, is about, there were 14 traffic calming projects completed, and then there's a projection of next quarter, or this quarter, I guess the quarter we're in, of 14 projects. Those are different projects. Is that correct?
They are.
Do you have the funding for those projects?
Some of it's coming out of the budgets that have already been approved for the Vision Zero, and then some are grant-funded, so.
Okay. So in total, you do have the money ready to go for those projects?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
Okay. Great. That is really good to know, because we still need to make our streets very safe, and that's one of the... one of the ways we're going to do it. And one of the things that really works is our quick build projects, where we can react quickly in a less expensive way. So is there a lot of grant money available for quick build projects?
The grants usually don't call out quick build, but we're able to achieve some success with the grants by describing them, that we're going to get them done quickly through a quick build.
Okay.
There is only, the empty C grant that we got that was specifically for a quick build, that actually was probably the only one that uses that term that I'm aware of, but...
Okay.
But yeah.
Thank you. I'm not, I guess I'll make a plug for this when we get into the priority setting session, but I want to make sure that we keep Vision Zero and funding infrastructure at top of mind as we go forward. Thanks, John. I have a question. Councilmember Ortiz raised the question, Omar, about aggregated data, and you said you have the data that is disaggregated. That would really be helpful to know, because people have, residents, neighbors, our constituents have a misconception about who are the unhoused. So if we could have some statistics, their members of the LGBT community, their veterans, their, whatever disaggregated data you have that you could share with us as a council office, I think would be really helpful for us as we go out into the community and talk to people about who their neighbors are.
Sure, Councilmember, thank you for that. I will just say, our regional partners actually produce some pretty good information about that disaggregation, so we'll be continuing to work with the continuum of care and get you the types of information that we have around veterans and this kind of thing, so that you have it.
Great, thank you. I understand you're not, you're getting the data from someone else, but I appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on to cleaning up our neighborhoods and the focus of vacant buildings last, or October, the second quarter of downtown, I'd just like to throw it out there that there are vacant blighted commercial buildings all over the city. So, Angel, when will we start seeing that be a focus, that our vacant blighted buildings will be worked on, or code enforcement will be involved there?
Yeah, Councilmember, yeah, I think you raised a real tough issue that we're trying to solve. I will say this, that the FAST pilot that we've launched in November is showing some great promise in terms of not only responding quicker to these issues, but also, you know, bringing them to closure. The other thing that we're doing, and you'll hear a little bit about this in the next presentation...
Okay.
...around some reengineering, around code enforcement, case log management and so forth, and so, you know, maybe I'll just wait till that section, but this is definitely something that we're tracking, and we're really looking at reengineering some things to kind of get to those citywide sooner.
Thank you for that, and these, the presentation you just made, and then the prior, the study session right afterwards, it's a little confusing to me as to what I should be asking when, so I will certainly wait for your answer there. And during, in the FAST program, are we going to commercial properties?
It's business and residence, so...
Okay.
Yeah, when you take a look at the first two, for example, just the initial launching of Areas One and Two, 6,300 parcels were reviewed, there were 133 citations issued, and 60% of those citations were resolved shortly after that first citation.
That's great.
So that, talk about quick response. So again, signs of some promise and new approaches there.
Really, really happy to hear that, thank you. And finally, I have a question, Rosalyn, there she is, about the pop-up spaces. Where, tell me about, can you tell me a little bit about the pop-up spaces? Where are they? I assume downtown someplace. Are these vacant properties that we own that, or we've got, we've arranged something with the landlord? Oh, Nancy's in the room, okay.
Yes, Nancy Klein is coming down...
I think that's exciting.
...to give you specifics. It is very exciting. These are currently vacant storefronts that will be leased up.
Thank you, Nancy Klein, Economic Development. Very happy to mention Chris Arkley, who's working on the project from our office. These first three will be on the Paseo, close to University, so there'll be those that work, and also a plug for everybody to go to Campus Burgers, which is going to have really low cost, really tasty burgers, so a lot's happening, then we'll get home eat opened, so good things.
Okay, wonderful. I look forward to hearing more about our pop-ups. With that, I'm finished, as my time is running out. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. Councilwoman Torres?
Nancy, whispers is really good, too, don't forget. But that's, but Campus Burgers, yes, when it comes in, let's go have a burger. Thank you so much for the presentation. I know that as the downtown council member, I love to hear our progress, but then, as usual, I'm also concerned about the concerns that we have. And so I actually have two questions, not sure who can answer them, but I, the first one is a question regarding the community service officers, so I'm not sure if that's our assistant chief. And before I ask the chief the question, I want to, you know, I want to let folks know that we are seeing amazing progress in downtown. We have a coordinated effort with, not only our city, right, our city employees and city departments, but Groundworks, San Jose Downtown Association Social Impact Team, right, that's, you know, very important. The mayor and myself have a ad hoc committee regarding safety and marketing, and so I know that, you know, downtown is in the upswing and is open for business, and it's open for, as I said before, it's open, it's open for our unsheltered individuals, all the way to, you know, our business owners and our clients, right, and their clients. So I know that last year we budgeted for CSOs to be biking around or walking around in our downtown core. I believe we were supposed to start in Feb, and now we're in Feb, and I don't, I don't see them, so what's happening there, Chief?
So, Paul Joseph, Assistant Chief, so we do have CSOs working downtown in the core, but they're doing it on an overtime basis. They're not, we don't have enough to deploy them in the manner in which it was budgeted just yet. We've managed to fill the CSOs about two of the five days per week. It's not something we can mandate them to do, but they volunteer to do it, so we have some coverage, not as much as we would ultimately like.
Okay, so we do, we actually do have our CSOs out there.
Yes, we do.
I thought they were supposed to be on bikes.
That became a little bit complicated, they're on foot, there's a lot of issues with the bikes, and we were working through those.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Chief. I'm glad that they're out there, and I also, I asked this question because I know that it is important that we not only, that we don't use our police officers for responses in downtown, right? So there's many, many concerns in downtown San Jose, and I'm so glad that we're, we have our CSOs who are responding to these concerns and not just our police officers, right? And then the other question is, the other question is, I know, again, you know, our, the unsheltered community in our downtown are our neighbors, and so, and I'm so glad that, you know, Councilmember Ortiz and Councilmember Foley asked the question of who these folks are. I know some of us sit on NSE and, you know, tell us who these, who these folks are. My question is, is, and I know that we've been discussing this a little bit more offline, but I think it's important for our community to know that we are going to be opening up a, you know, first-of-its-kind collaboration center, right, with multiple services offered to our unhoused. It's not a drop-in center yet, though I hope it does become one, but a service center or a resource center for our unhoused, and I just want to know, you know, where are we at in that? I know we were supposed to, you know, it's a vacant storefront, as you could, we just heard, right, we're utilizing all these vacant storefronts that we have in the city of San Jose. Where are we at in opening up this, you know, this collaboration with a whole slew of partners?
Great, thank you so much, Council...
And if you can name those partners, Rosalyn, that'd be great.
Certainly. Thank you so much for the question, Councilmember Torres. So we're very excited, it's taking us a little bit longer than we anticipated to get the site ready for our partners, but we will be ready to open, we're hoping by the end of this month. And as you mentioned, this space will be an opportunity for the Housing Department's outreach staff to come together with our county partners, as well as our partners with the Downtown Association. So their social impact team members will be housed in that location as well. So this will be a space for all of our partners to gather regularly, to talk about some of the case management issues as it relates to our unsheltered residents in downtown.
Great, thank you so much. And so, you know, it's important that we make sure that this happens, right, and that in the next, in the next report that we get, that, you know, that number where folks feel that downtown is unsafe because of our, you know, our homeless and other concerns, right, that that, you know, comes down a little bit, because I know it came down a little bit, but not too much. But again, you know, progress is progress, right, and so I think that's important, so. And then with that, that was, that's all I had for today.
Okay, great. Thanks, Councilmember. Once again, really appreciate the update. We've got a motion on the floor. Let's vote.
I think I hit it too soon. Oh, no, they're absent, so I have, motion passes unanimously with Kamai and Cohen absent.
Okay, so...
Cohen just voted yes, so now it's unanimous with Kamai absent.
Cohen's in. All right, excellent. I believe we are on to open forum. So we're going to go to open forum, and then we will take a short break to then switch over to the study session. So open forum is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do you have any cards?
Yes, I have 10 cards.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to call your name, you can come up in any order you want to come up, so don't worry about that. This person is Callan, Calendar? Wanda Hendricks? Queen Anne? I can't read the last name, sorry. And I don't have a name on this one, but it says President of Iola Williams Senior's Advisory Group. Joan Holt, just come to the menu, the menu, the microphone, sorry. I'm apparently hungry.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. We are here, it's actually imperative that we come before you this afternoon. The majority of us have been involved with the Seven Trees Community Center, and was actually there the day they cut the ribbon and opened the place. We were at the George Shua Kaur Center over on McLoughlin before we were moved to Seven Trees. Last Wednesday, Wednesday a week ago, we got a very concerning email from one of the members who was in the sewing class telling us that during, during the sewing class, someone from the center brought a box of things, brought things and items during Black History Month. And it was, of course, very upset, upsetting to us, and I'm sure each and every one of you know that February is Black History Month. We understood that one member was so offended that she did not even bother to look in the box after she saw this beautiful African material that was actually purchased by our group. I mean, we were members of the council, and, but we received reports from the San Jose Parks and Recs and individuals, some of the management at Seven Trees Community Center, saying that nothing was remo...
Next speaker.
I don't know why, I don't know why they said that when they happened.
I'm sorry, your time?
Yeah, ma'am, I'm hoping we can connect. Stephen, if you could at least, if you're willing, maybe we can get your contact information and try to follow up on what's happened. I don't know if others are going to speak on the same topic. I think we'd probably want to learn more.
Talk from here.
Our next speaker is...
Is on the same topic, sure. Let's, okay, well, let's hear from more speakers, and then we'll also follow up offline.
Hello, is it on?
Yes.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Queen Anne Cannon, and I consider myself one of the ground people from the community. I'm a community organizer, worker, support person, and I have like at-stakeness in this conversation. Iola Williams is not only one of our legends, she's part of our history. We have such a hard time gathering all our history and having it recognized in the community and the world, and the people from the '60s, which I am, have worked very hard in building and maintaining Black History, not only for our youth, but for ourselves and for our future generations. So it's part of our legacy, the legacy we want to bring forward to our, to our children. And so the idea that anything from one of our legends has been, been displaced is really disrespectful, and I don't want to go into all the words that I have, but if you look up it in the Google, they have a really great description of what disrespectful behavior is and what it means. So I don't want to say all those words, but you can look it up. It's very, when someone's being disrespectful, it's not only being rude, you can't even say "I'm sorry," it goes deeper than that. So I want to say that this makes me feel disrespected, and her legend and her memories and our future are disrespected with the idea that any part of her legacy is being removed or tampered with. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
From here? Well, if you can stand and move, that way they can see you better. Hello, my name is Joan Holt, and I'm a member of Seven Trees Community Center, and it was brought to my attention while we were in our sewing class, I'm not the one that started it, but in our sewing class, a box was brought to us with African fabrics and wall hangings, and said that we could take the fabric and use it, because they thought, I guess, it was just fabric for us to use as for sewing, but it was not. I found out, because I didn't know, so I took a wall hanging home to hang on my wall. So I got a call from the instructor, we need to bring, you need to bring it back, because they weren't theirs, they weren't supposed to be given out, it belonged to the community center. So I brought it back, and I was just called in to witness what I saw and what I did and what happened, so that's why I'm here today. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call in Chris Margaret Amy.
And for those who just spoke on the community center, we're going to follow up, connect with appropriate city staff, and make sure we continue the conversation and get to the bottom of what's happened and resolve it. Okay, Amy, hi.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Amy Cody, and I'm here to share my concern about the proposed Costco at Westgate West. It is an undersized site and an inappropriate location for a giant bulk item warehouse expected to generate 11,000 vehicle trips per day. This traffic would greatly impact roads and intersections around the site, adjacent neighborhoods, and the 1,500 students going and coming from Prospect High School, which is located across the street. Without protected parking, co-located businesses... Without protected parking, co-located businesses would also suffer. The current DEIR does not adequately evaluate transportation impacts, including pedestrian and cyclist safety. This despite the proximity to the high school and Saratoga Avenue, a Vision Zero prior, priority safety corridor being right there. It also fails to require mitigations along Prospect Road where a main Costco entrance is located. The city approved the massive El Paseo Signature Project around the corner to create a high-density, pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, transit-oriented urban village. A Costco warehouse is antithetical to this vision. This congested area needs multi-jurisdictional, multimodal transportation planning, not many thousand cars heading to and from Costco. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Again, I've called, the email address includes the name Calendar in it. Wanda, somebody who doesn't have a name, this is President of Iola Williams Senior Advisory Group. Margaret, Chris, and then I also have Ha Trune and Sandra Asher. So if you guys want to come down first person, a microphone can speak. And that's all of the cards. So basically, if you turn in a card, please come on down, except for the people who are here for study session. Go ahead.
My name is Margaret. I am from Iola Williams. I was there to repair this that I had gotten in Egypt, and I wanted to repair it for Black History. That's why I was in the class. I did see them bring in the box. I did see them distribute the pieces. I didn't take anything because I know how long we have worked to get those pieces for the walls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm the president of the Iola Williams Senior Board. And I did my research as well. I went to the community center and I met with the supervisor. And we discussed the matter. He indicated that the results occurred because it was a random selection of the bins that contained all of the materials that's used in the sewing class. And, and so doing, the person who carried the bins in accidentally picked up a bin that included the Black History items. Now, there's a controversy around that. Some members questioned that because it had to be reclaimed. Who gave the orders? Who went to, who took the bins in and did they check the bins before? I mean, there are many questions. And so what I'm asking the council to do is to appoint a person, and that person will meet with the community, and they will go over a process of, of how they would run an audit to know exactly what is there and how things are taken out, so that we'd eliminate this problem. If we just assume it the way it is now, it won't work because people will always be doubting what someone says. If we set it initially, find out what is there, and we have an audit frequently, it may be a year, maybe six months or whatever.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dear Mayor and dear Councilmember, my name is Ha Trios, and I am President of Vietnamese American Community of Nok Teng Kavinya. We commend the Mayor Office, Councilmember Dawn Office, the City Council of San Jose, and City of San Jose stop of supporting and hosting the test celebration and the flag raising ceremony Monday, February 12, 2024, yesterday. However, we have few suggestions for the Mayor Office for planning such future events. Number one, why the USA Code indicates that USA flag can be displayed between sunrise and sunset. We suggest that USA flag be raised early in the day as possible. In regarding the Vietnamese Union flag protocol, suggest it should be raised in the morning and not in the afternoon. Number two, flag raising ceremony should tag redemptive over commentary speeches and other activity. Therefore, the raising of the flag should be first in the order of any activity. The flag raising ceremony and at the Harry State Garden have followed the principle and with event most of Councilmember has shared with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Roberta.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Asher, and I am speaking today as a member of the Real Coalition. The city needs to immediately restore virtual public comment for all city council, committee, and commission meetings. I agree that the comments of a few bad actors are vile and have no place in a community meeting. But here's the thing, the impact of cutting off community participation means that people who most need an equitable city budget will be sidelined throughout this process. The budget season is the most critical time of the year for civic engagement. The ban on remote comments denies a large segment of our community the opportunity to participate in our democratic process. Consider the disabled residents who rely on technology to speak, have social anxiety, or who otherwise have to arrange rides with paratransit just to come down and see, give their comment in person. Working people without the ability to arrange to take time off of work to arrange their schedules around hour-long council meetings. I've been here since 1:30 waiting to give this comment. I have extreme privilege to be able to do so. Parents with small children who can't take time off to attend these meetings. Even a short hiatus from virtual public comment can have lasting effects on public policy. The city should rise to the challenge of finding solutions to abusive language comments while simultaneously continuing to facilitate public comment by providing a virtual option. I ask that you immediately restore virtual public comment to ensure that you and the city once again can benefit from the voices silenced by your recent decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I am also speaking on behalf of Christine Fitzgerald. She asked me to speak as she's not able to make this meeting in person. You might wonder why this is. Quite simply, her access needs are not being met. My care, and this is Christine's words I'm reading, "My caregiver quit for a better paying placement, and I have yet to find someone to work with hours and times that I need help in getting ready for my day." The process of preparation to join any meeting in person is multilayered. It's simply not having to get up and get cleaned and dressed and out the door. This would have been possible back in the day when I could dress and bathe and drive myself. Now these things have to be done with the help of others. I have to have attendance help. I have to schedule access rides to and from a venue, making sure that lines up with my attendance time. Compare the above to this. I take care of my needs as best I can.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roberta Whitty. I live in the English Estates neighborhood. And I'm here to just talk to you about the Costco that's being proposed in Westgate West Shopping Center. This proposed Costco is too big for Westgate West Shopping Center and will generate too much traffic and already heavily impacted and dangerous intersection. A warehouse is not appropriate for this property. This is not what an urban village that was suggested for our West Valley citizens should look like. This will forever change West San Jose in a negative way and put the seniors in the three facilities in our neighborhood, in my neighborhood, and the many hundreds of Prospect High School students at high risk for tragic accidents. The DEIR fails to analyze or mitigate significant impacts on pedestrians and bicyclists. In a previous meeting of the residents, we were told there was no study for the intersection of Lyle Drive and Prospect Road, which is the front entrance of the high school and the primary entrance to my neighborhood, English Estates, where the ambulances are here five to six times per day. Not required for this proposal, yet sitting only a few hundred feet from the proposed Costco entrance? Really? San Jose's bike plan calls for reducing bicycle collisions. Vision Zero plan is intended to make it a safe community. None of these things are listed and being discussed. This DEIR is inadequate because it fails to analyze and mitigate project impacts on pedestrians in the immediate area of the proposed Costco. San Jose City can do better to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, back to council.
Okay, great. And at least as long as the current Zoom policy is in place, I do want to also just note that we can have folks write in as an alter, for those who can't, who can't make it. I know City Attorney wanted me to just flag that for the record for folks, though, totally get the, the point. Okay, we are now, our open session is adjourned. We are taking a roughly ten to fifteen minute break while we do the AV tran, the transition.
Closer to fifteen.
Closer to fifteen, and then we will come back to do the priority setting session.